Councilmember Danuski? Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Sperry?
She's excused.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda is we're very, very fortunate tonight to have with us one of our county council members who we work very, very closely with. We're very fortunate to have a great member of the county council and our state legislative delegation. Councilmember Dambowski has done so much for us. A couple of small examples. I've been, and a number of us on the council have been complaining about blackberries on the Burt Gilman Trail for a number of years. When Ron Sims was the executive, I was finally told after a few years not to talk about it anymore. And then Bob Ferguson, our Attorney General, when he was our county council member, it was a running joke. Every time he'd see me, it was, "The blackberries." Well, I know, the blackberries. Everybody knew, but nothing got done. Councilmember Dambowski was sworn in, and I'm telling you, three months later, it was taken care of.[96.31][96.31](APPLAUSE). I mean, he has done the job. And that's just one small example. He's been there for us. A number of us are excited about the potential of getting a ferry, passenger-only ferry service here. And he's been spearheading the move to get us that passenger ferry service. And we are now, I think, the top contender in the list to get it. So, he continues to amaze me in his work for us, and he really cares about the cities that he represents. Councilmember Dambowski, if you would be so kind to swear in the four council members.
Okay. Where shall we do this?
Right over there by the flags, I think, is good.
All right, we're going to go in order. We have four, and we're starting with Brett.
Would you like a microphone?
Do I need a microphone?
Yeah.
David. I've never sworn anybody in here, so I hope I don't mess this up. I think I've got it. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brett Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly? I think I misled you there.[167.23][167.23](LAUGHING). That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of City of Kenmore Council, position number one.
Of the office of Kenmore City Council, position number one.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[202.87][202.87](APPLAUSE).
The clerk, Brett, has a certificate of election for you. All right, we will go on now to position number three, which I think is Dr. Milton Curtis, right? Dr. Curtis. How are you, sir?
I'm very good.
All right. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand, state, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Milton Curtis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of the City of Kenmore Council, position number three.
Of the office and duties of the council, position number three.
Right. According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Dr. Curtis.[266.02][266.02](APPLAUSE). All right, position number five is Mayor Baker.
What solemnly?[277.58][277.58](LAUGHING).
We're going to see if we can get solemnly down. I think I'm missing... Are we sure about this? I mean, (LAUGHING) are you sure?
We're very boys.
All right, Mr. Mayor, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Councilmember, I see. Well, you still are, but we're going to do... All right, please raise your right hand, David. I state your name.
I, David Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties
Perform and discharge the duties.
You've got it. Of the office of City of Kenmore Council, position number five.
Of the office of Kenmore City Council, position number five.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor Baker.[339.41][339.41](APPLAUSE). It's your certificate of election. And our last position, position seven, Stacy Danuski. Stacy, welcome. Raise your right hand. Are you ready?
Ready.
Are you sure?
Solemnly.
Okay. She got it. All right, I state your name.
I, Stacy Danuski.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington
Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of City of Kenmore Council, position number seven.
Of the office of Kenmore City Council, position number seven.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[390.72][390.72](APPLAUSE).
Got a certificate for you. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the appreciation and recognition on our work on vegetation control.[402.13][402.13](LAUGHING). It's an ongoing process and challenge. I just want to thank the council and the community for the opportunity to join you and participate in tonight's ceremony. It's very meaningful to me. You know, when John McMaster named Kenmore on the lake in 1901, I don't think he, at the time, was running a shingle mill, had any idea what it would become. And here you are at the dawn of the second century of the city of Kenmore. And I don't think there's a time I would rather serve on the Kenmore City Council. Obviously, you're not a city that's 100-plus years old. You're a newer city. But all that's going on here, the council members that have just been sworn in, the next four years are an incredible opportunity to really make Kenmore into what it will be for the next 100 years. I'm really proud to be your partner in that at King County. It's a real honor to work with each of you. I look forward to a continued strong partnership as we go forward to make this city a fantastic city. Thank you.
Thank you.[464.37][464.37](APPLAUSE). You know, we're very proud to have you representing us, and I know you're going to be around the next four years because there will be a lot of ribbon cuttings going on. And we need you there. And don't forget tomorrow night. We've got this big thing going on, so... Anyway.
Stay for a little bit.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor and of the deputy mayor. And so, I guess we will open the floor for nominations for mayor. Councilmember Danuski?
I nominate David Baker. He's done an excellent job of getting the city of Kenmore out there. Oh, (LAUGHING) getting the voice of city of Kenmore out there for countywide, statewide, and nationally, so I nominate him.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for office of mayor?
I move the nominations be closed.
It's been moved the nominations be closed. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. So, as a formality, there's one nomination for the position of mayor, and that's me, David Baker. And if the clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry? Councilmember Sperry... Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.[578.82][578.82](LAUGHING).
Six one, six zero.
I want to just take this opportunity to thank my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got a thank you.
It's been fun, and I really appreciate the confidence the council has put into me for the last few years. It truly means a lot, and Kenmore is moving forward, and I think we're all really excited about it. Next item on the agenda, then, is the election of the deputy mayor. Although it's not on the agenda, it's the way things work, so... The floor will take nominations for deputy mayor. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'll nominate Alan Van Ness. He's done a great job the last couple of years as deputy mayor, and he's been very active locally, regionally, and nationally, actually. So, I'm very pleased with the work he's done, and I think he'd do a fine job continuing in that role.
All right, we have Councilmember Alan Van Ness. Are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Are there any other nominations for deputy mayor? Seeing none, hearing none, I will declare the nominations closed. Again, let's just go ahead. For formality, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Council... Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
I think you already got it.
Yes, again.
Oh, sorry.[698.79][698.79](LAUGHING). Uh, Councilmember Van Ness?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right. Thank you all. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the council for the confidence they placed in me finishing out the last two years and continuing on for the next two. I've really enjoyed working with Mayor Baker in various capacities and different committees and commissions, both locally, regionally, and nationally, and look forward to continuing to do that over the next two years, representing the city of Kenmore. Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda, you know, it's not often that we get to do something like this, and I think it's important that our community really takes a moment and recognize somebody when they reach the milestone in life that this lady has reached.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Agenda approval, please.
Pardon?
Agenda approval.
Um, oh, right. We do have that first. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Hearing none, the agenda is approved as written.
Thank you.
Where is that? Oh, that is![777.12][777.12](LAUGHING). If you would all please join me in the flag slip.
(LAUGHING).
Okay.
(LAUGHING).
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are times when I get ahead of things, but I know I've got six others here, five others tonight, that will keep me straightened out, so I do appreciate that. So, it's really our pleasure to recognize Marie Martin on the occasion of her 100th birthday. And whereas Marie Martin has lived in the Seattle area her entire life, having grown up just north of what was then the Ballard neighborhood limit, and even living on a houseboat for a time, and whereas Marie attended Cascade Grade School and Broadway High School, and whereas she has always loved the water, ever since the first time she was set in the water as a child, and this love of water has kept her in this area, and whereas Marie met her husband Ken in high school. They got together at a dance at the Everstate Dance Club, and whereas she and Ken were married during the Depression in 1936, and moved into their house in Kenmore in 1970 and built a life for themselves here. And whereas, when Marie was young, her godfather showed her how to use a paintbrush, and she has been painting ever since. And whereas, her paintings can be seen all around Kenmore, from friends' houses to the Inglemore Golf Club. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of Kenmore, Washington congratulates Marie Martin on the occasion of her 100th birthday, and be it further resolved that the Kenmore City Council and all Kenmore residents extend best wishes to Marie for All right. We're going to go on now with... Let me make sure I've got everything in front of this, so I don't get in trouble again. We're going to go on with the presentation of the 2015 Salary Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, and council members. The Salary Review Commission was comprised of myself, Glenn Rogers, and Shar Crawford. We met twice in December, December 11th and 17th, to consider revising your salaries. We did some comparisons with communities across the state of a similar population size, as well as our neighboring communities as well, and we found your salaries to be to the low and medium range in comparison to those. As a result, we decided to increase your salaries. For the council members, we are proposing a raise to $800 a month, the mayor at $900 a month, and after that, an annual raise of 2% for a period of five years, 2% per year for five years, after which a new Salary Review Commission should be convened for additional reviews. And that is our recommendation.
Thank you. All right, it's Councilmember Rogers.
Speaking for Shar and myself, Shar wanted to relate that the work you guys have done over these last years has been tremendously done well, and we are very, very excited about where the city is going. It's obvious that our people in the city, the citizens of this city, enjoy where we're headed. Otherwise, three out of four of you would have had competition at the polls this year. But they're saying, "We like what you're doing." So, continue doing what you're doing, because you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and we'd love to have given you more, but c'est la vie.[1151.15][1151.15](LAUGHING).
And the Honorable Glenn Rogers, you had a big hand in this. You may be off the council now, but it was a lot of the work you did also there, you know, the past number of years, so thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, then, is the citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views that are important to you and to the community, but we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. The clock is over there. And will the clerk please call the first person in a minute? We still have people signing up, which is good. So, while we're waiting here, there is going to be a joint council meeting here tomorrow night. It's going to be with the city's councils of Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Bothell, and ourselves, and we're going to be talking about Sound Transit and Sound Transit issues. We're very fortunate to have some projects that will affect the bus service, improve the bus service that we have here in Kenmore, and we're very excited about that, and we're... This is a strategy meeting to finalize some comments for a letter that need to be written to Sound Transit, but we're pretty excited about some of the possibilities. The clerk, please call the first person.
Thank you. My name, like you said, my name's Cody Painter. I'm just here to follow up with an email that you responded to, Mr. Mayor, about ballfields here in Kenmore in St. Edward's Park. I'm a dad. I have a son and a daughter. They both play soccer, baseball, softball. I'm a board member for Northlake Little League, also a coach and an umpire. As of today, we have almost 350 kids signed up for Little League this year. Northlake represents pretty much all of Kenmore. We're the only city around here in close proximity without all-weather sports fields. We have no fields with lights. When it rains, our soccer players are playing in water, generally at Bastier. So, I just want to adamantly express my feeling about getting those ballfields done at St. Edward's Park. I drive from Kenmore to Bothell to Woodinville to, and further, almost every weekend and multiple nights a week, almost year-round. And have an adequate sports field in Kenmore really is, you know, has a big impact, not only on us parents having to carpool and travel to other fields, but also it's an economic thing. I'd much rather go down here to the pizza place after a ballgame rather than spending my money in a town I don't live in. So, there's an economic impact to think about, too, as well as, you know, the kids want to be proud of where they play sports, and two ballfields here just, you know, isn't adequate for the level of participation. It builds community, you know, something we can be prideful of, if we have nice, adequate, lit ballfields for our kids to play on. You know, what's being proposed over there, it's already a field, it's just an unmaintained tract of land. And we can make it great down there. It's not like we're having to, you know, tear anything down or replace anything or anything like that. It's a piece of property that Wash... Washington State Parks doesn't want to maintain anymore, from what I gather. So, I'd just like to express my adamant support, and hopefully the council takes plans forward and makes it happen for our kids here. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your reassignment as mayor. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm here to comment on the St. Edward's Ballfields update that you're going to receive later on in the meeting, and I was very interested to hear from the county council member who is here, and expressed a lot of excitement about the next four years and the opportunities that are there for Kenmore if it will capitalize on them. And I guess what I want to say is that, you know, we talk about whenever we look at communities, we want to accentuate the positive, we want to capitalize on our assets, and we have a rock star school district in the state of Washington, the North Shore School District. It is a magnet, and it is why a lot of people come to this community, and this is, in turn, a great community for families and kids. And yet, if you listen to the speaker who was just before you, we're right now doing a disservice to our kids. And I don't have a lot of motivation here. My kids came and went through the system and played on fields. And so, for... This isn't about me. This is about the future of a lot of kids and families in our communities, and we need to do right by them. It's a tragedy that we are sending kids to play in Kirkland, in Woodinville, in Bothell, in every community but the one we're in, and we have two fields sitting there at St. Edward's. We have an opportunity with the good work of some of your staff and negotiating with State Parks. It looks like there's a great opportunity to take those fields, upgrade them, you're not having to create any new space. Those are two fields that are there now, and you could make terrific play spaces for kids of the future if you do this right. You also have an opportunity up at the seminary building. That's not necessarily on your agenda tonight, but think of the possibilities of someone who wants to invest a lot of money in saving that seminary building and the city being able to do a little bit to upgrade those field spaces. If you want to talk about exciting opportunities in Kenmore, it's right there before you. We would urge you to do right by the kids and families of this community and keep pushing and do the deal with State Parks for the ballfields in Kenmore and at St. Ed's. It's the right thing to do, and we hope you get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Schmidt, and I will as well be speaking about the agenda item that you have for St. Edward's Park. I'm a parent, have two kids that are currently just at the cusp of leaving all the league activities and moving on to high school sports, but still actively a member of several of the local sports boards. But more importantly, I'm a citizen of the city of Kenmore. Been here now since 1999 and have watched the city grow and develop, and I'm very, very excited about all the opportunities that are going on there, or here. As a city that proudly touts being a most playful city, or a great place to raise kids, or a city that's committed to getting kids moving, these are all great statements that the city supports, except that the actions don't necessarily, or the resources don't necessarily always meet those agenda items. Between the 400 kids that are part of the Northlake Little League baseball community and the 700 kids that make up the North Shore youth soccer community, all those Kenmore kids simply don't have enough resources, places where they can go out and be active. And this doesn't even begin to include some of the other leagues, like softball, lacrosse, cricket, et cetera. Today, there is an existing resource that could significantly improve the situation, but unfortunately, through neglect and abandonment and maybe some unfortunate circumstances in the past, the site sits unused and is unavailable for the needs of the community. So, I'm here this evening to urge the council to move forward with the opportunity to work with the State Parks Department and make that an active playfield within St. Edward's Park. This really is a simple opportunity and not one that should have a lot of controversy to it. It exists. There's nothing that has to be done other than rejuvenate it and bring it up to spec and code for what we need to use it for. It was intended for its use as it is today. That's why there's a dugout. That's why there's bases. That's why there's a cricket pitch. That's why there are, even though there's no painted lines there, it is being used for soccer. It may be used occasionally as parking for music or beer festivals and such, but, don't get me wrong, I like beer, I like festivals. That's not what it was intended to be. If you look within the borders of the city, there really are no other logical places for us to do this. So, as a parent, again, that travels to Bothell, to Kirkland, to Woodinville, and sees all these great places that kids have to play, and then sadly, looking at a showcase like what's over on Big Finn Hill, again, I encourage you, as we talk about all these great things that are happening within the city, to move forward with the opportunity to take the St. Ed's field and make that someplace that we can actually actively use for our kids. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Woodard. I'm here to support the St. Edward's State Park baseball. My son's been playing baseball for a couple of... My son's been playing baseball for a couple of years now for the Northlake Little League. I got involved with the board, had to back out because my schedule didn't fit out. But after listening to everybody and what they had to do and what we had to do as parents to take our child to all the neighboring cities and counties to play Little League, my thought is this is an excellent opportunity for Kenmore to support the future generations of children to come, whether it's baseball, softball, soccer, or whatever you want to do to use that, utilize that field. This is your last chance. There is nothing else here in Kenmore that you're going to use for Little League baseball. Forty-five years ago, my father got together with a bunch of his friends and said, "We need a Little League in their town." It was Canoga Park, California. I was eight years old. Eleven months later, they opened for opening day, and now, forty-five years later, West Hills Boys Baseball is still going strong. You can Google it, they have their own website and everything. So I've already been through this before, and I know what my son would have to go through if he has to travel to Bothell, Woodinville, and every place else to go play Little League. Also, what they haven't, the gentleman before me hadn't said that Northlake Little League spends $50,000 a year to other places to go rent their fields. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard.
Hi, I'm Carl Michaelman. Do we give our address still?
Yes.
5727 Northeast 197th Street, Kenmore. Happy New Year to all of you, council. And so one thing that's interesting with the baseball fields, we talk about another thing called economic development, which is a real exciting thing here in Kenmore. I bring to you today, as many of you know, I short-platted my property in January of 2009 because what was happening was the council took buildable lots from 4,500 square feet to 5,400, and I only had 5,200 square feet. Therefore, I was grandfathered into it, and I had to do the final come recorded by February 12 of this year. I went ahead and did the final, started off three months ago, and I found out that North Shore Utility District decided that they want to slap on a $11,000 fee for a connection fee for me when I told them that I was not building. The bigger concern for me is I went and checked all the other utility districts, and no one charges until you go ahead out and permit. As you know, I am part of the Kenmore Business Alliance, and one thing I have been very much involved with is economic development here in the city of Kenmore. My concern is that with North Shore Utility District, they are now hurting our economic development. With that being said, what was concerning to me is that the city never knew that they were asking for fees upfront, even if they weren't permitting. In my situation, it might be too late, but I'm still hoping on the 11th hour that they, as in North Shore Utilities, can help me figure this thing out. But in the future, I think there's a conflict here, and I know North Shore Utility is their own municipality, and so your hands might be tied. But the concerning issue is, again, we're having confliction for economic development because if we're deferring impact fees that start in 2017 for economic development until they get permitted, North Shore Utilities is turning around. So I urge the council, if there's a way, to figure out and talk to North Shore Utilities to be able to, people like myself who just went and short-platted just for retirement, wasn't going to go ahead and do anything, and when I got old and gray and I was ready to go into the nursing home, that's when I would sell it. My problem is, because I'm grandfathered in, okay, what happens is, is that if I don't get it filed by King County July 12, I mean, I'm sorry, February 12, I lose the dirt. I can't go ahead and retry to short-plat. So I ask the council to get together and discuss this, and I know your hands might be tied, but if there's some way that both municipalities can have a communication and help our growth of economic development and that people are not in a situation that I have been put in. So anyways, I thank you for your time, and thanks.
Good evening. My name is Mike Mulcair. My address is 15347 Seventieth Avenue Northeast in Kenmore. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, Mr. Carlinsey, Mr. Kasaguma, and city staff. I wanted to say that I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen and not in my role as planning commissioner. I'm also speaking tonight as a board member of Families for Active Parks in Kenmore. I'm also speaking as a former coach of Northlake Little League and former board member of that organization, and currently as a coach of the North Shore Youth Soccer Association, where I coach a 13-year-old boys' soccer team. And I want to speak about the St. Edwards Ballfield Project. But before I do, I wanted just to take a moment and commend and thank you for the great work the city has made on park spaces over the past two or three years. The new Jack Crawford Skate Park behind us is a wonderful example of moving quickly and making a great addition to our city. The full basketball court at Rhododendron Park is wonderful, and I'm really looking forward to the improvements at Morelands Park in the next year or so. That said, we still have a great shortage of sports fields in Kenmore. As you've heard from other citizens tonight, we simply don't have enough quality sports fields for our youth baseball, softball, and soccer organizations. The fields we use are leased, many of them are out of town, and many of the ones that we use are from the North Shore School District, and frankly, they're in pretty horrible condition. They don't have usable bases, they have potholes and chuck holes. And as a coach, I do worry about the safety of the kids playing both baseball and soccer on some of those fields. And myself, and I know plenty of the other coaches that I work with, have brought bags of sand and bags of dirt to practice, to fill in the holes before we put the kids out there to play. And that's not the sort of thing we should have to do, and I'd encourage you tonight and over the next couple of weeks to really take a look at the St. Edwards Ballfield opportunity and not only seize that opportunity and add more ballfields to our town, which badly needs them, but to really make the effort to make these high-quality, first-class fields. It's so important for the kids to feel they've got quality fields to play on, not just an open space. And the other thing that came to mind as I was thinking about this tonight is, I think it's really important for the parents and the coaches and the community for these fields to be as low-maintenance as you can find a way to make them. A lot of the time that's put in on sports fields, preparing the ballfields before games, whether it's soccer or baseball or softball, and then cleaning up after the games and putting things the way they were to start the day, that's done by the parents, and that's done by the coaches and the volunteers. And I'd really rather see that time put into the time spent with the kids, whether it's coaching or being a leader or, you know, a good example for these kids, rather than dragging a rake or driving a tractor. I think if there are low-maintenance ways to improve these fields, that's going to be a benefit to everybody. So I'd also like to say that I'm speaking tonight on behalf of an organization, Families for Active Parks in Kenmore. We're in support of the St. Edwards Ballfield proposal. We are also in support of the seminary, St. Edward's Seminary Building Rehabilitation Project with Daniels Real Estate. So we encourage you to move forward on both of those programs, and I look forward to your continuing support of Park Space in Kenmore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcair.
Good evening, Governor, council members. Chandler Simons, 5635 Northeast 202nd Place, Kenmore. I'm here to also speak, you may be getting tired of hearing about the ballfield situation, but I've lived in Kenmore for 17 years, my wife and I, and we have five children, ages 19 to 20. And my older kids actually had the benefit of playing on the fields at St. Edwards State Park, and, but my younger kids have not. And so my younger kids, playing, having home games in Maltby or in Redmond, and having to drive, you know, if traffic's bad, having to drive a half an hour to go play a game when they could be playing here at home, seems, as other people have said, like a disservice to our citizens. I've been on, I've been a coach, I've coached soccer, basketball, softball for 18 years, and I've coached recreational sports, all, not competitive sports. So I've coached sports for kids to have fun. And I think that the fields, that resurfacing the fields and making the fields improved be a great thing, and I think it'd be great for our city, obviously. People have talked about the financial impact with people coming into our city to play sports instead of leaving. And then also, I think, to get people into our state park, which is a beautiful area, that having these fields there would just bring additional people into that park. And I also wanted to mention that, that being, not only have I been a coach, but I've also been, I'm the president of the Kenmore Soccer Association, and I'd like to correct Mr. Schmidt, who spoke earlier, and say that we have, that we have 1,200 kids in Kenmore that play soccer. And that's a lot of kids. And most of the kids now are practicing on dirt fields that are at the elementary schools. We have very few grass surfaces for the kids to play on, and improving the fields at the state park will just make a safer and a better place for our kids to play. And I'd also invite anybody that has questions about this, about refurbishing these ballfields, to step out to one of the fields in our outlined communities on a Saturday in the fall and go and look at all the little smiling faces on the kids in their bright-colored uniforms and see how happy they are and how much fun they're having. And we want our kids to have that fun here in the city of Kenmore, as well as other communities around us. Thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Good evening, Douglas Nugent, 7055 Northeast 163rd Street. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen, at least for now. Later, I'll speak as a planning commissioner. So I'm wearing my citizen hat, as did Commissioner Mulcair, and I'm speaking to add my voice to those who've spoken on behalf of the city pursuing a lease and development of ballfields on St. Edwards Park. I think it was Aristotle who said that the most persuasive part of any argument is the credibility of the person delivering it. And I want to turn to the gentleman who's shown up tonight to speak for these ballfields because there's a phrase, I haven't used it much, but I think it goes, "Walking the talk." These gentlemen have walked the talk. They've spent hundreds of hours every year, thousands of hours, in their adult lives, coaching not just their kids, but hundreds of kids in this community. Some of those men have coached my kids. And when I saw them doing it, particularly because my kid was probably the worst player on the team, and encouraging him, no matter what, to get back in there and give it his best, I realized I owed this community something. These people have given to it, I should give to it. So in about 2007, I did this thing that I thought was kind of a long shot at the time, and that was volunteer to be on the Kenmore Planning Commission. So it's all because I saw not just men like this, but women, their wives and the mothers who'd give to the team parties and help out in any way they could to make those teams a good experience for their kids. And that's the glue that makes a community, and I'm sure that's what's driven many of you to have volunteered before you joined the council and now serve on the council. So I asked you to think about that when you think of the words spoken by the men back here. And I just want to add one more point, and that is, and a number of the speakers have already alluded to this, and it's interesting because it dovetails with what Mayor Baker said during this little interlude, and that was tomorrow night, Sound Transit. Some of the people on the Sound Transit Board are going to be here, and City of Kenmore council members and those of the other cities on 522 are going to be here, and people like me, at least I hope to be here, wearing a silly yellow shirt saying, "522 Transit Now", just to persuade them to put more money into the Sound Transit III bomb proceeds and dedicate it to 522, which is typically overlooked when people talk about regional traffic problems. Why do I bring it up, regional traffic problems, in the context of St. Edwards Ballfields? Because of these gentlemen have pointed out, we're driving, families are driving, moms are carpooling and driving kids during rush hour up and down 522 to get to the ballfields in Bothell, you know, and places that are 10, 15 miles away. And that takes a heck of a long time out of their day, and it clogs up the roads that we're trying to clear up with public transit. So it all ties together, and it helps in that way, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent.
My name is Randy Shatto. I live at 19828 62nd Avenue Northeast in Kenmore. Mayor and council members, I'm here as a long-term resident, 55 years. I've been a general contractor here, participated in the building of over 100 homes and remodels in that 35 years. And I've watched over the years regulations that have brought the state of construction to near all-time highs, actually, all-time highs. I'm addressing tonight road standards. There's many elements involved. I haven't had a chance to absorb them all, as you have been pondering them. Having participated not only in new construction, I've also been involved in formal and short-plats. And I'm concerned specifically about one aspect of, the cost of short-plating has become so expensive, it's now at a point where it competes with formal plating. The same regulations that formal plats require short-plating is nearly at that standard. And I believe that about the only thing that's missing is an environmental impact statement at this point. The addition to the road standards is going to put another level of cost and expense and undue pain to not only builders, but also residents. And I'm here specifically to speak in particular to one phase in short-plating. There's been an exception, that when one legal vacant lot is created, road standards do not, are not required to meet the current standards. And I have a family that have been residents here for 28 years that have leaned on me to start a short plat for them, to help them instigate it. They have property that fronts both 75th and 76th north of here, and they will be required creating one single lot to do road improvements on both fronts. The cost of those road improvements are probably, in the end, the value of their lot. They're ready for retirement, they're disabled, and their lifelong plan had been to use part of the value on the property that they've lived on to short-plat it out in time, and it's going to be prohibitive for them to do that. I also speak on my own behalf, in the sense that I have my own property that I still want to short-plat, and it, too, would create one single vacant lot, and it will require specific road standard improvements that will, and I've talked with Brian Hampson about this, and it's a difficult thing to analyze what those improvements would need to be as it's on a dead-end street, there's no cul-de-sac. And I'm concerned about what the cost could eventually cause for me on that particular site. My recommendation in this is, I guess there's one other thing that I wanted to mention. I have watched over the years the costs being absorbed within the developer, from road standards to mitigation fees that run the gamut. And I've always, I've always tried to come to rationale in those arenas. I understand it's an undue or an unfair I understand it's, it's an undue, or an unfair burden to put upon current property owners, to have to absorb a lot of the infrastructure that it takes in order to house new residents. And so, a lot of that burden falls on the developers, which consequently does eventually fall upon the, the new homeowners because of the costs of, of building. My recommendation here would be, let's, let's continue to pass those expenses on to developers. But what can we do to make it easier on residents within this city that have, are being priced out of being able to live in this city? And these folks in particular won't be able to afford to stay in Kenmore if they're unable to short plat their property. My, my advice would be to consider a standard that would allow homeowners that are trying to plat their property to have a different set of standards and/or requirements to, either defer the cost out when the city's finally ready to build that infrastructure, which would involve curb gutter and sidewalks, and give them a credit in being able to affordably plat their property without, without that particular improvement. So, I thank you for your time, and, and your service as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shatto.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Thank you all for your comments. Mr. Baker, Mr. Levy, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Woodward, Mr. Mulcair, and Mr. Simons, and Mr. Nugent, thank you all for your comments on the ball fields. The, the city council has, has, has made it clear, and staff is certainly doing everything possible to move forward on these as quickly as possible. We realize that there's an opportunity here. We've been trying to come up with a satisfactory solution on ball fields ever since, I know I took office in 2004, and we're still continuing. We still want to see this done, and we are still going to move forward and, and, and get this done. I know that on Wednesday, I will be in the front row at the Natural Resources and Parks Committee, uh, meeting of the, of the, the Washington State Senate. So, that Senate committee, I will be there, and I will be there in the front row. And I will be at the meeting in, in Linwood, and I will be at the meeting in March. I will be there in the front row, and if there's an opportunity to speak, I will. Otherwise, they will know that Kenmore is representative, and we are not going away. So, we agree with you on, on this opportunity, and we are going to continue to, to work for it. Mr. Michaelman, thank you for your concerns, and I, and I wish that there was something that we can do, but as we all know, this is N U D. And Mr. Shatto, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's something that we, as a council, are concerned about, is, is cost to, to our homeowners. And Mr. Carlinsey, is there something that you could bring that would sort of help us understand a little bit better the cost that an individual who wants to, uh, short plat one lot can, might be born to bear, so we can have a better understanding of, of that issue?
Yeah, I'm looking over at our Public Works Director, Chris Overlyce, and she might be able to better answer that question.
I have to look at you, because that's all I'm...
Our plan is to bring the road standards back to you in February, probably the February 8th meeting is, is what I'm assuming. And we can definitely look into Mr. Shatto's concerns. And Chris, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure, as council may remember, we had several policy conversations last year, but it's, and then we had our hearing in December on the road standards. But Brian and I were talking, and I'd be more than happy to look into the specific situation. We did talk to council about different plating and flag lots. We had a lot of conversations last year. So, I'm more than happy, I, I don't know the circumstances to which he was referencing, happy to look at it. I don't think I'm going to be able to get, get to council on January 25th for adoption, so it likely will be early to mid-February, so we have time to look at it. We also have received one other comment about the flag lot kind of policies that we were looking at. So, I'm happy to do some research and, and let you know what I see, and we can talk about it some more.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. We certainly appreciate hearing from you, and it's what, what sort of keeps us going, because we can't work in a vacuum, we need to hear from, from our residents. So, we certainly thank you for, for speaking. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Second.
Moved, Dan, seconded. If there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding ordinance number 15 dash 0414, establishing a business and occupation tax on heavy manufacturing. Ms. Gregory.
I have a brief introduction prior to the public hearing. So, tonight, an ordinance will be introduced, which would establish a business and occupation tax on heavy manufacturing within the city. Prior to council consideration and direction regarding the tax ordinance, this hearing is provided in order to allow for public comment on the subject. At the March 16th, 2015 city council meeting, the council directed that several options regarding heavy industrial uses be pursued further by the city staff. Per the minutes of that meeting, one option specifically stated was instituting a business and occupation tax on heavy industries within Kenmore, as regulated under RCW 35A 82020. The city ordinance number 15 dash 0414 in your packet would establish such a tax and create a new chapter 3.75 in the Kenmore Municipal Code. This ordinance was developed under the State of Washington's Required Model Ordinance, established for cities, which became effective January 1st, 2013. Forty-one of 281 cities in Washington have a BNO tax. A list of those cities is provided as Exhibit 2 to the Agenda Bill. Of the four taxable sectors defined in the model ordinance, heavy manufacturing, as defined by city code, would be taxed. Retail, services, and wholesale activities are not subject to the city ordinance. And per the prescribed ordinance, gross income, subject to the tax, will be allocated to the location where the activity takes place. Therefore, the statutory tax rate, which is two-tenths of 1%, is applied to the value of products manufactured in the city of Kenmore. The ordinance provides that the first $20,000 of gross receipts each year are exempt from the tax, unless the, a higher threshold would be desired by the city. And there are no restrictions on the manner in which the BNO tax revenues may be used, and at this time, it's anticipated that these revenues will be credited to the general fund. The effective date of the tax, per the ordinance, would be April 1st, 2016. An administrative ordinance, also a model prescribed by the state, is under development, which would set forth a reporting format and other criteria that the city will apply when administering this tax. The administrative ordinance is scheduled to be brought to the city council in late February. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing ended. I will declare the, the public hearing open. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Robert Burns. I'm the plant manager at Cal Portland Concrete, located at 6423 Northeast 175th Street, here in Kenmore. Unfortunately, we did not learn that the proposal was on the agenda for this meeting until last Friday. Cal Portland is one of the two businesses identified in the background information provided with the proposed ordinance that would be affected by this proposal. The application administration and enforcement of the BNO tax is complex, and we have not had adequate opportunity to consider the proposal and prepare informed comments. For this reason, I respectfully request additional time to review the comment. We ask that the council extend the comment period on this proposal until the end of January, and wait to vote on the issue until after the comments are received, and given appropriate consideration by the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Noel Barnett.
My name is Noel Barnett. I work for Semex. My personal address, 420 Southwest 11th Avenue in Canby, Oregon. I'm the Pacific Northwest Environmental Manager. I'm here also to basically reiterate, or request, an extension on public comments. Like Cal Portland, we weren't notified until Friday afternoon that we realized that this was going to be on the agenda and potentially be adopted. What we'd like to do, what we appreciate the, the notification, would have been nice to have a little bit more leeway to actually formulate, review, and have ample opportunity to respond intelligently. So, so we also respectfully request that the comment period be extended as well through the end of this month. Thank you.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? On the, regarding ordinance number 15 dash 0414, and establishing a business and occupation tax on heavy manufacturing, anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. Next item on the agenda is the top ordinance, number 15 dash 0414, establishing a business and occupation tax on heavy manufacturing. Ms. Gregory.
I, I really don't have any additional comments, but I will take your questions.
Questions, Councilmember Herbig.
As to my ability.
Can you go over the notification that goes in, that goes on when we are holding a public hearing on, on this, and what notification happened for this public hearing?
I, I don't remember the date that the public hearing was advertised. It's been probably 10 days ago?
January 4th.
January 4th.
And that was published in the Seattle Times?
Yes.
Oh, that, oh, it was published?
Was, was it published?
No, that was, it was well before, it was 10 days before the, it was probably 10 days before today, that it was published in the Times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Any other questions? Deputy Mayor.
Has there been any communication with the businesses involved prior to this, this notification of the hearing?
Not that I'm aware of, other than the public, the public notice and the phone call that was made on Friday. And it was discussed during a public meeting on March 6th, March 16th, earlier this year, which I believe was attended by both entities, when council directed this as one of the avenues they'd like to pursue regarding heavy industrial use.
Counselmember Curtis.
Is there any rush or timeline or deadline that's forcing us to act sooner than giving an extra few weeks for these businesses to respond?
No, there, there is no deadline.
Thank you.
If, if I could jump in on that, the proposed effective date is April 1st, and we need some time to come back with that second ordinance, the administrative ordinance that Joanne talked about. If you allowed, if you did adoption of this ordinance on, say, January 25th, I believe that would still give Ms. Gregory some time to come back with the administrative ordinance in February, and still have the ordinance effective April 1st, correct?
Correct. I'm, I'm anticipating bringing the administrative ordinance back around February 22nd.
Counselmember Danuski.
As the two businesses that are affected by the ordinance have, have both asked and, and stated that they didn't get enough time, I support waiting a little bit.
Counselmember Herbig.
I would just advise that companies that know that we're discussing things, maybe sign up for our email agenda list. It's really easy, shows up in your inbox, good, week and a half ahead of time. You would have gotten some more notice then.
City manager, you'd indicated that we could act on this at the next meeting or two? Is that what, did I hear that understatement?
Yeah, totally within your discretion. You can act tonight, or you can postpone it for a couple of weeks.
So, Counselmember Smith.
Yeah, I, I, too, find it interesting, I mean, when these companies showed up with their attorneys within the last year, at two of our meetings, we discussed many different options. We discussed BNO tax, and that you knew it was going to be a topic of discussion. We give proper notice, public notice, about the public hearing, and then you show up and you tell us you didn't know anything about it. It would seem to me that it would be reasonable, just from a reasonable perspective, that if, if you're going to be participating in the process, you would at least want to pay attention to what's going on, because this is something that has come up, you know it's been a topic of discussion, and by the, the comments from your attorneys, when you were here last time, it was clear that you are frustrated and felt a little disjointed about the process. So, I, I would basically say, please pay attention to what's reasonable public notice. And with that said, I have no problem waiting until the 26th, and I'd be happy to make a motion that we delay this decision and this agenda item until the 26th meeting.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty, twenty-fifth, January 25th meeting.
I'll second that.
Do you, do you want to go ahead and make that motion, then?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Moved, Dan, seconded. Any discussion on the motion in front of us? The motion is to postpone this until the 25th. Hearing no further discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Six, zero.
All right, so we're moving this, the adoption of this ordinance to the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Planning Commission Recommendation on Micro Housing. Ms. Mint, our Community Development Director, and Lori Anderson, our Senior Planner, and Mr. Nugent, the Chair.
Yes, we have Lori Anderson, Senior Planner, and Doug Nugent, who is just appointed again as the Chair of the Planning Commission. So, this evening, we're bringing forward the Planning Commission's recommendation on micro housing. If you'll recall, this was a docket item, part of the Planning Commission's work program that you assigned to the Planning Commission last year. The Planning Commission reviewed this, they've held a public hearing, they deliberated long and hard about this, and came up with a recommendation, which was approved 6 to 1. So, this evening, what I would like to do is ask Lori to give sort of a quick overview of the regulations, and then I would like to ask Chair Nugent to kind of talk about the Planning Commission's deliberation, and focus on some of the policy issues that the Planning Commission debated during this topic. Thank you.
Good evening. So, this will not take very long. The amendments themselves are not a huge package of amendments, but they're addressing what are called micro housing apartments. So, these are smaller than typical residential units. They may contain their own kitchen and bath facilities, or in some instances, they may share those facilities with neighboring units. The current interest in micro housing, and, and the city of Kenmore has received a couple of inquiries... of inquiries, is generated both by a desire for downsizing and a smaller environmental footprint, and to reduce housing costs. The units are smaller, and although the furnishings and the unique features of micro housing units may make them more expensive on a per square foot basis, overall, they are typically less expensive than a traditional studio apartment, for example. So the amendments basically do three things. They define micro housing for the city, acknowledging that these units may share kitchen facilities. So they make it clear if someone comes into the city to ask about building a micro housing unit. What is a micro housing unit? And then they also clarify that they're treated just like any other type of multifamily development, in terms of allowable density, in terms of location, and in terms of design, for example. So we are not setting out new standards for how dense micro housing developments might be. They conform to existing density rules. We've just tried to define what they are. And then, as part of that definition, we've added minimum and maximum unit sizes. And the purpose of that, the minimum size comes directly from the building code. So the building code actually does have minimum size standards for living units, and that's why the lower end of the threshold was set. The upper end of the micro housing unit threshold was set to limit the number of people who could live in a micro housing unit. So by setting the upper threshold at 320 square feet, the building code again controls and would only allow two people to live in the unit. The one development standard proposed for adjustment with these regulations is required parking. So what these new standards, proposed regulations would do would be to use the existing studio apartment parking ratio for micro housing units that are located more than a quarter mile from State Route 522. A quarter mile was chosen as a typical walking distance to transit, comfortable walking distance. And so for units located closer to SR 522, the parking ratio is proposed to be reduced to .75 parking spaces per unit, rather than 1 or 1.2 parking spaces per unit, which is the requirement for studio apartments, depending on the zoning district. So with that, Debbie mentioned that these regulations were adopted 6 to 1 by the planning commission, and the chair, Douglas Nugent, is here to talk about those discussions.
Thank you, Lori. For the record, Douglas Nugent, Chair, Kenmore Planning Commission. And let me point out that the commission is unanimous in its support for the concept of micro housing. Let me distinguish too, and I think the staff has made this distinction in its preparatory materials, this is not tiny housing, which is a very small house on a traditional, single-family lot. This is multifamily housing, but the units are much smaller. I like to think of it as like a dorm room. And a lot of the people who buy these, I mean, it's not for everybody, of course, but a lot of people who buy these are first-time housing buyers, and they're in a very tight position in this escalating housing market, and they're trying to own something, but they can't even afford a condo. So this gives them something that's more affordable and that they're comfortable with from having gone to college and grad school, and this is something they're willing to do. So we on the commission embrace this idea because it does help the affordable housing problem, gives them a way of entering into the market and building equity, and it's a comfortable lifestyle for them. The reason there was a dissenting vote on the commission was the parking issue, which I think the council is well aware of and the city has, you know, is wrestling with right now. We've got increased density going in downtown, which is good for a lot of reasons, but it means more people have cars, and they want to park around here, and we've got fewer parking stalls. And the increased traffic that we've talked about tonight means more people want to take the bus, and we have, we don't have enough park and ride stalls. So what kind of parking ratio should we require? Staff mentioned traditionally for studio apartments, it's one parking stall per housing unit, studio housing unit. They've mentioned in their materials that research shows that where they do have micro housing around here, people don't own as many cars. And this is downtown Seattle, this is downtown Kirkland, to the extent we have research. In fact, it's as low as one out of three units owns a car. So maybe you could pare down the parking ratio to only be, for example, half a parking stall for every housing unit. The problem is that Kenmore's not as dense as downtown Seattle or downtown Kirkland, and we don't have the transportation options that they do. So people are going to be still more car-dependent in Kenmore, even if they live in these units than they would be in those places. We don't have the full-service economy yet. We're getting there, a lot of good things are happening in that direction. But the question is, can we take the risk by reducing the parking ratio of increasing the parking problem to get the benefit of micro housing? And that's why there was a dissenting vote there. And the commission did compromise, the staff had originally proposed, with some good reasons, a .6 parking ratio per micro housing unit. And we were wrestling with, oh, do we go all the way up to 1, or do we go with something in the middle, which is what the majority decided to do with a .7 ratio. But there are still concerns, and I was authorized to mention those tonight, about whether .75 is right, and maybe, maybe not, maybe, you know, but that's, these are all reasonable, you know, a reasonable range of decision-making that we leave to you, but those are our concerns on both sides of that issue.
These are typically for sale, not for rent?
That's my understanding.
I actually think they are more frequently for rent. There would be no restriction on doing a micro housing unit as a condo, but more typically for rent. And we spent a lot of time talking about ownership housing, tiny homes on trailers or even built on a lot, and that was something that the city council was not wanting to move ahead to discuss at this time. We had a joint meeting last fall where that was decided.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I think the lower parking requirement is what the future is going to be in many jurisdictions are going this way with housing, multifamily housing that's close to transportation, and with the increase in Uber, in Lyft, and other ride-sharing kinds of developments, people don't need cars. And I try to avoid going to downtown Seattle, because if I drive, boy, that's hard finding a parking place, it's expensive. So people really don't want to, and I think that's the future. So I'm not opposed to the .75. I think that's pretty reasonable. And individuals who are attracted to this kind of size of housing are probably also those that don't want to own a car, and will rely on public transportation or the ride-sharing kinds of things in the future. So those units that are close, within a quarter of a mile of transit, I think it makes perfect sense, and I think that's the wave of the future. I think you're going to see more and more of this in jurisdictions in the future.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thanks for your presentation. I think the information is laid out really nicely. It seems reasonable, and it obviously is the trend. I think the biggest concern gets down to trying to figure out how a downtown Kenmore compares to a downtown Kirkland or Seattle, and clearly, we don't have nearly the density. But on the same hand, it does seem like a reasonable compromise, and I would support it.
I know, I had served a number of years on the Regional Transit Committee, and we had looked at some of the definitions of, for like transit-oriented and that, and it was always at a quarter of a mile, but I think when I was on there, we were looking at a half a mile. And I think, given what we're doing with the buses and what we're trying to do with transportation here, any thought given to sort of increase that, maybe not to a half a mile, but increase that distance from transit a little bit, so that if somebody wanted to do micro housing a little bit further, still might qualify?
Well, micro housing is treated the same as multifamily, so you could do micro housing wherever multifamily would.
Except that parking requirement is where I'm going.
That parking requirement is set at a quarter mile. The question is, is could we, you know, increase it a little bit? What is that little bit, and what would that little bit get you? I think there was research to support, a quarter mile seemed reasonable, and that seemed to address the planning commission's concern that beyond that seemed to be beyond a reasonable sort of expectation for using transit, which is why they then recommended continuing with the parking requirement that's typical for a studio unit. So that's kind of why we felt that was sort of more research-based at a quarter mile.
Given what we're seeing now with CarToGo and Uber and Lyft and some of the other services that are popping up, is there an opportunity to look at that distance in the future? Or are we, I mean, I know, yes, there is, but how much of a hassle will it be?
Well, yes, you're correct. You're always allowed and can certainly take up future code amendments, but that would only apply to future developments that hadn't come in under the regulations that you adopt right now. So I think we felt that this seemed to be a reasonable proposal, and if there's a lot of demand that comes in, we can certainly come back and take another look at it. But I think it seemed a reasonable proposal based on Kenmore's level of development right now, and again, this might be something new that we might see more of, and if we see there's a huge demand for it that might warrant increasing that distance, we can certainly do that.
Don't get me wrong, I think you guys did a tremendous job on this, and I'm very happy with the way it is, it was just a question. Councilmember Herbig.
I want to start off by saying, I think you, at the end of the day, I think you guys came to a really good place on a lot of these issues, and I think it's kind of neat that we're moving forward in this area. My one concern is around the parking, and probably not for the reasons you're thinking, but this is the one area where I actually kind of trust developers to do what's right, and I think parking minimums, especially when we're dealing with an affordable housing crisis right now, we are forcing developers to build parking spaces that cost anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 per parking space, and that is going to, that is going to eat away at the affordability of these smaller units. I don't believe that developers are going to build something that people aren't going to rent, and I believe that if they think that they need parking to make their development work, then they will build the parking, and I think if they don't, they will go out of business. I think that I would be in support of no parking minimums for these or going lower. But other than that, I think it's great, and I think it's good that we're moving forward, and thank you for all your work on this.
Anybody else? All right, so I think what we're looking here for is to send back, staff back to draw up an ordinance. So if there are no objections, that is the direction we'll move.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I didn't know that, I mean, the council, we're in agreement to do. If you want a formal motion and a formal vote, then I suppose we can do it, but we're going to get it when you get the ordinance back, so.
You would be making a motion on the ordinance, so just as long as I'm clear that there is consensus to bring back an ordinance based on this recommendation, I'm okay with that.
Yes, there's lots of nodding going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Imagine Kenmore Update. Mrs. Overlees. Now, let me, let me just take a moment here while I was coming, to thank the commissioners that were here. Commissioner Baker, we thank you, no relation, but we thank you for your presence, and Commissioner Malkar, we thank you for your presence, and Commissioner Nugent, but, well, yes, he is the chair. And who am I missing?
Commissioner Malkar.
I did say Commissioner Malkar.
Will you just a minute to set up, please, and we'll get going?
Your honor, while they're getting set up, if I can say a few words about this Imagine Kenmore project. I'm really pleased with how it's gone so far. I'm grateful to you for allocating the resources for this project in the biennial budget. I think we've made good use of those resources, and I'm really pleased with the team of people that have been working on it, and it really has taken a team of people. Chris Overlees, our Public Works Director graciously volunteered to be the team lead, and I'm thankful for that, and she's showed great leadership during this project. You see other members of my staff up there as well, Joanne Gregory, Leslie Harris, Debbie Bent, they've also been working very hard on Imagine Kenmore, and we've been lucky to enlist the services of Burke Associates, and Natasha Fado of Burke Associates has done a great job for our team, and as a sub consultant, she's had Dominic Martin of EMC Research, he's conducted the statistically valid survey that was conducted in early December. So I just want to just mainly say that this is going well, in my opinion, and we've still got more to do, but this team has gathered a lot of great information from the community in various ways. That's one thing I like about it, is we've created a multitude of ways for the community to give their input. And without stealing any more thunder, I will turn it over to Chris Overlees, our Public Works Director.
I think that was the thunder. I think that was good. Thank you. So Rob introduced our team. Good evening, Mayor Baker and council, and we are so excited to be here tonight. We have so much information to share. So the goal of this evening is to have Natasha and Dominic and our team give you an update on all the community outreach and the statistically valid survey that we did late in 2015. You'll recall, as Rob mentioned, community meetings, Natasha's team was at the library talking to people. We've been spending just lots of fun time and energy talking to the community about Kenmore and what, if anything, we would like to see different and new. So we've been talking about parks projects, pet and bike safety. And so with that, the first thing we're going to do this evening is Dominic is going to go through the statistically valid survey, and that actually, his presentation, there were tons of attachments to this evening's council report. We have Dominic's presentation is attached to the report electronically. We have Natasha, the Burke team, we have their community outreach summary attached to the council report, and we also have the presentation that Natasha is giving tonight attached to that report. So everything we're talking about is already uploaded to that council bill, so it should be pretty easy to find, but it is tons of information. Feel free to ask questions as we go, it's a lot, and then after we're done, we'll have discussion. We're not asking council for any specific recommendations this evening, but it's a point in the process where we wanted to touch base and kind of tell you where we think we're headed from here. So if we're good.
Can I say one thing? On attachment A3, the outreach summary, that is a very large document with lots of data, and we figured it might be easier for you to flip through that particular portion in hard copy version, and so we have that A3 attachment in three-ring binders for you. And I actually brought them to the retreat to give to you, and I forgot to hand them out. So they're still in my office, actually, so I'll try to get them before we leave tonight.
Yep, so again, Dominic's going to go first, and then Natasha will follow. So take it away.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to start off with the methodology. This was a live telephone survey, including landlines and cellphones of registered voters in the city of Kenmore. It was conducted December 2nd through the 10th, 2015. We did 300 total interviews citywide. This gives us a margin of error of about 5.7 points. It was weighted to reflect the citywide registered voter population, and the interviews were conducted using trained and professional interviewers. Just to give you a sense of where the geography, about 58% of the city are in the north, it's divided by the river with 42% in the south. I'm going to go directly to the slides. The first question we asked is about the direction of Kenmore. This is a standard question we ask in a lot of different areas. We ask, do you feel the things in Kenmore are generally going in the right direction, or do you feel things have gone pretty seriously off on the wrong track? 69% said right direction, only 12% said wrong track, with 18% don't know. This is a very good number. Over the last few years, we've seen a high into the mid 70s in most areas around here. I think the last time we did this in Kirkland, they were in the low 60s, so you're ahead there a little bit. And in Seattle, we just recently came out with a poll in the mid 50s. So this is a really good number, with 1 in 10 saying wrong track, most in the right direction or don't know. I think it's a number you guys can be very proud of. I think it's a number you guys can be very proud of. Quality of life in Kenmore, we used a scale of excellent, good, only fair, or poor, and asked residents to rate them. 86% gave a positive rating, a quarter at excellent. Again, only 1 in 12 negative rating, and that's mostly only fair. This is a great number to start off with. I think one direction we could go is to move that good percentage into excellent, but overall, at 86% positive rating, that's a very good number. We asked an open-ended question, what is the top issue the city of Kenmore needs to address over the next two years? So we asked this open-ended, and we recorded their verbatim answer, and then we went through this and aggregated it into categories, and what you see, the top category that pops up is issues around traffic congestion. I don't think that's a big surprise for anybody here. I noticed some issues coming into town from Seattle, but overwhelmingly, over a third, are talking about issues around traffic congestion. And we get into the single digits below that with economic issues. We're going to talk a little bit about bicycle and pedestrian safety, that's there at 6%. More sidewalks, road infrastructure, 5 and 4%, some waterfront at 4, and we get down into the 3s and 2s, and 12% there didn't have any...didn't have an answer at all. We check in with some job ratings. We asked this again on a scale of excellent, good, only fair, or poor, and the first rating is the job Kenmore City Government does overall. That's a really good rating there, a good 55% and excellent at 10%. That gives us a net positive of 36%. The net score there on the right is the sum of excellent and good minus the sum of only fair and poor. And so what we're really looking for, these numbers, to see when there's division or more negative number that starts to creep in, which is a low net positive number. Secondly, the job Kenmore City Government does at welcoming citizen involvement, another really good rating. This was a surprise for me. I actually expected a little bit more of a ding here for you guys, but at 25% net positive rating, that's a very good number. There's a little bit more division when we talk about spending tax dollars responsibly, so we say the job Kenmore City Government does is spending your tax dollars responsibly. You're still at a net positive rating of 5% there, but we have 41% giving you an overall negative rating, 30% only fair, and 11% poor. Again, I don't think we need to send off any alarm bells here, but it's something to pay attention to and remind us that at any time, we can communicate about city positives or wins that the city is doing, it's a chance for us to increase that number a bit. We asked satisfaction around parks and recreation facilities. I'm going to read the question. We did this on a scale from 1 to 7, where 1 means you're not at all satisfied, and 7 means you're completely satisfied. We asked them to please tell us how satisfied they are with Kenmore's parks and recreation facilities. We collapsed these into this pie chart there, 5 to 7 satisfied, 3/4 at 73%, 15% were a 4 or don't know, and the not satisfied, a 1 to 3 at 12%. So that's a very low not satisfied number there. Satisfaction at 73% is a very good number. We asked the follow-up question of what are one or two things Kenmore could do to improve parks and recreation facilities? So this was among those who said they were not satisfied. And what you see to the right there is it's really about building more recreational facilities, so building more recreational facilities, providing more information regarding parks, building more parks and open front spaces and waterfront access. So it's really good to think in the way that most residents are satisfied, and those who are not satisfied are saying that they want more items, so it's not that trash isn't being picked up, or the parks are in a bad condition, it's that we're not satisfied because we want more. We asked about pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. We asked this on the same 1 to 7 scale, where 1 is not at all satisfied and 7 is completely satisfied. As you can see, the not satisfied rating, 1 to 3, has increased to 36% there, so over a third saying they're not satisfied, 43% satisfied, and 21% saying they don't know or a 4 on the scale. And when we asked the follow-up of what one or two things Kenmore can do to improve pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, we see the top category there being building more sidewalks or walkways, followed by more lighting to sidewalks and streets, building more bike We asked a list of potential project priorities. We asked this on a 1 to 7 scale, where 1 means they felt that items should be a very low priority for funding, and 7 means they felt that items should be a very high priority for funding. In this chart here, what we did is we took all 15 items and we sorted them by their mean, and what you start to see is what goes to the top is constructing new sidewalks on arterial roads. Second to that, acquiring and protecting natural open space, followed by adding to and improving Kenmore's waterfront access. All the way to the right there, intensity, 7, so that's the percentage of respondents that gave it the highest point on the scale. Again, at the top for constructing new sidewalks on arterial roads, it's a 5.41 mean, but 37% gave that the highest point of a 7. Just below that for acquiring and protecting natural open space, 41% gave that a 7. So you can kind of see, there's the first tier there that stops at adding to and improving Kenmore's waterfront access, and then kind of a second tier from adding pedestrian and bicycle underpass or overpass for crossing both a way, and that gets us down to building indoor recreation facilities and gyms, and then you see a third tier start to drop off, and the intensity rating goes from a top high point of 41 and 37% down to the single digits. With, you know, sports-related, which are more specific type items, sports and athletic fields, sports courts, adding an off-leash dog park, and adding space for community gardens as a lower priority on the list. So this doesn't mean that they're not important at all, but in comparison to the other items, they're not seen as high of a priority as the other items at the top. We asked the follow-up about waterfront features and their importance, to give us a little bit of direction on potential project areas. We asked this on a scale of 1 to 7 as well. Up here in the light blue, we did the 5 and 6, in the dark blue, we did the 7, very important, with a total importance on the right. At the top is trails and boardwalks along the waterfront, with over a quarter giving that the highest importance of a 7, and 45% 6 and 5, followed by swimming and beach access, waterfront viewpoints with 50% total importance, boating and paddling facilities, we drop off there, and fishing at the bottom. We asked about funding for parks facilities. A majority of residents support potential neighborhood and community parks funding, however, the intensity of support is low. Go ahead and read the measure. "The measure would provide funding to acquire, enhance, and maintain Kenmore neighborhood and community parks. The measure would raise approximately $1.5 million per year by authorizing the city to levy property taxes and would cost the owner of a $400,000 home about $180 per year." Overall, 59% say they would support, but however, the intensity is quite low here, with 16% saying they would strongly support. So overall, we're at 59%, but 16% strongly. And you can see to the right of that, the opposition, the strong opposition is more than the positive support at 18% strong opposition there. And to the right, this shows us just a little bit of demographic breakouts where support is higher among renters and younger voters, and opposition is higher, you know, at the bottom, among homeowners and those over the age of 50. Funding for pedestrian and bicycle safety, 61% support overall. I guess we'll go ahead and read the measure. "The measure would provide funding to improve walking and biking facilities along arterial streets, would raise approximately $1.5 million per year for the owner of a $400,000..." It costs the owner of a $400,000 home $180 per year. Again, you can see the strong support is much higher than the previous measure there, at 27% strongly support, 34% somewhat support, and the opposition overall at 36% with 20% strong and 16% somewhat support. And again, we see a higher support among those under the age of 50 and renters, and the lowest support, but still above a majority among those in the south, melon, over the age of 50. We asked about a metropolitan parks district. Some say the city of Kenmore should create a metropolitan parks district. Formation of a parks district would create additional taxing authority to provide for the improvement, maintenance, and acquisition of parks and recreation facilities in Kenmore. The parks district would be governed by the Kenmore City Council, serving as the Board of Kenmore Metropolitan Parks District, and would have the authority to levy up to $0.75 per $1,000 of assessed value. The overall opposition is almost at a majority there at 50%, with the strong opposition at 26% and somewhat at 24%. So that's a little bit of a hill to climb if we're trying to get support for a metropolitan parks district in the city. And again, our least supporter are those who are older and homeowners. The greatest amount of support are south renters and those under the age of 50. This is a slide showing the funding measure comparison, so you can see them side by side. Again, for parks facilities, the overall support is around 59%, with the intensity there at 16%. You can see the intensity increases when we talk about pedestrian and bicycle safety measure. We go to an overall support of 61%, with over a quarter, 27% strongly supporting. And the third measure we test, metropolitan parks district, you can see the 50% in opposition with the strong opposition there at 26%. We asked about major arterial enhancements with some options. We asked these options and rotated them. The first one was new sidewalks on one side of 68th Avenue north of City Hall to the city's northern limit. Option 2, new sidewalks on one side of Wantita Drive south of Sim Amish River to the city's southern city limit. Option 3, replacing and repairing old sidewalks on 61st Avenue. And the plurality is there with Wantita Drive at 40%, followed by 68th Avenue at 30%, and then with 1 and 5, 61st Avenue at 20%. We looked at this by geography, north and south. Not a big surprise there, 68th Avenue is the highest at 44%, followed by 61st at 26, and then Wantita Drive. Among those in the south, Wantita Drive is the highest, 67% overall, and 68th and 61st are tied there at 11%. That's it.
Can you hear me? Okay. Do you have any questions for Dominic on this, or should I jump into the next presentation?
Councilmember Curtis.
So when I look at big studies like this, the first thing I say is, well, does it make sense? And does it sort of fit with, you know, this study plus the other studies and all the information we got in different ways? And I'd say there's real strong consistency here, and particularly in the...now, I don't know if the pages are exactly the same, but in the paper handout, page 16 showed that the top ones were constructing new sidewalks on arterial roads, acquiring and protecting natural open space, and adding to and improving Kenmore's waterfront access. And the sidewalks made total sense, and the waterfront access, we've heard that for 10 years. The one that sort of intrigued me, or seemed, you know, I couldn't explain it exactly, was acquire and protecting natural open spaces. So I actually went through all of the comments, not every single one, but I was looking for anybody looking to acquire new open space, because I said, oh my goodness, with St. Edward, and Squires Landing, and Wall Swamp Creek, and the Twin Springs coming, what in the world do we need with more open space? The answer was, I couldn't find anybody. I found one comment that said, "The more, the merrier," but everybody else was looking at how can they use that open space? Can we have some trails through there? Can we have some boardwalks and birding spaces? So then it made sense. They aren't looking for us to purchase more, they're just saying we want to be able to access what we have. So then all three made total sense. Another...one last comment on page 24, so we're comparing parks, facilities with bicycle, pet and bike safety. And so when I look at that, so the overall rating there, the somewhat, well, the in favor, 59 versus 61, were pretty equal. The opposed, 38, 36, pretty equal. So there's that stronger commitment for the pet and bike safety. So...and that doesn't totally surprise me either, because we've been working on parks for 10 years. We've been funding and making progress, but we've really just got, other than 522, all the sidewalks we put in there, we're really just getting going on a lot of the bike and pet safety issues. We've got them funded, we're ready to start building, so it's sort of like, this makes sense to me. So I was really, you know, happy with the kind of the outcome there. I might disagree a little bit with the statement, residents have the greatest support over, both overall and by intensity, so I'm not sure the overall is borne out by the data. I would say the overall, they're about equal support, but the intensity is definitely there. They're more intense on the pet and bike safety. So I was pretty happy, the study made sense, and it fit with the other sources where you gathered information.
Absolutely, and just to go back to your other comment, I think you're right on, is that when we look at this in connection to the satisfaction ratings, there's high satisfaction for parks, much lower satisfaction for pedestrian and bicycle safety. So when we look at this and we see the intensity of support lower for parks and higher for pet safety, that makes sense to the story that we're seeing in the rest of the data. So absolutely.
Councilmember Danuski.
I thought it was really interesting that the support is actually fairly even. I was expecting to see one spike over the other. I suppose the pedestrian bike safety intensity, one thing is, we've always been telling people that we can't afford to build sidewalks, so I can see that that's one reason why that support would be stronger. They've heard that message, and they may be supporting us, helping out with that. One project that may, just for people looking at projects, get a little support on the sidewalk side is, I've heard a lot of people mentioning on 73rd, from Kenmore Elementary to Kenmore Junior High, there's a lot of new development there and no sidewalks, and lots and lots of people walking to schools, both directions on that road, and also, everybody over 73rd is out of the Kenmore Elementary and Kenmore Junior High school district, and they're wavering in, so there's a lot more walkers on 73rd than a lot of things. So just something to note on a possible project. Let's see. One thing I'd want to know going forward or later on is, you know, if one package of either parks or sidewalks gets on the ballot, what would be the options to finish the other one? So is there, if sidewalks go on the ballot, are there ways to fund parks or the other way around that may make you want to pick one or the other? Would be something I'd be interested in later. And since they're both the same, I don't know what the plans are going forward, but once we get projects lists for both, are we going to go more community outreach to see if specific projects in each one have higher support over the other? Is that part of the plan?
So we were gonna...maybe I should do the next presentation first quick, and then we can talk about the next steps, and part of it...
Sounds good.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to kind of jump way ahead.
We've got a couple more questions here. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, a question occurred to me, with parks and pet and bike safety pretty equal, I was curious as to whether those who rated one of them as strongly supportive and somewhat supportive were the same people that supported the other one, or are they different groups of people supporting each one? Did you look at that data? In other words, somebody might be supporting pet bike safety but opposed parks?
Yes.
And how much of that difference is there? Or are they the same 60% in favor of both?
We didn't look at...we didn't pair them in specifically to answer your question, but I can tell you, most of the time, it's the same third or so. Usually, we see a quarter to a third that oppose any tax measure.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I, since...excuse me. First of all, thank you, Dominic, for the presentation and the questions that you answered the other day. Since there are a number of people that spoke tonight and are here regarding the ballfields, and I just wanted to mention one thing that we had discussed before, and that is that in this survey, it does state, it's asking if you want to build additional ballfields, and I think the one thing that's different for... And I think the one thing that's different for, relative to the other recreational and parks items, is that we're not talking about expanding for our ballfields. We just, the only two that are used by the public now that the city, since we own no fields, they are leased, and we don't control them. We don't control the long-term use of that lease. And I do believe personally that, and this is just my own opinion, that if the question were, should the city own ballfields or have control long-term of ballfields, I do believe it would rate higher than it does here. Clearly, this information is very beneficial, and I, when you go to page 16 and you look at the priorities, I think there's nothing that's really a real surprise there in the way it's laid out. And I think it's a lot of good information, but I just wanted to note the ballfields being a little different than the other recreational facilities because of the leasing arrangements.
I'd like to add, you're exactly right. All of the things we were asking here, and we really did intend to ask the questions this way when we started, it was about additional capacity. So everything you see here is more sidewalks, more, you know, a dog park, we don't have one. So really, I agree with what you're saying, is that, you know, we thought, we didn't talk about it when we were putting the survey together, but I think that's kind of a complicated, it is different. But just to clarify, yeah, when we asked this question, it was additional capacity.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Hurey. I know what you're thinking, and want to give you the opportunity.
Well, no, I just say, I've been looking at this data since we talked about it Friday or Saturday at the council meeting. I think it is really interesting. And I think that the, I think the intensity question between parks facilities and pet bike safety is something that we really do need to consider strongly as we move forward. I don't think any of us intend to, if we decide to go forward, I hope we, at least I don't intend to support something that I think is going to fail. And I think what we see here is that people like parks, parks are great. Nobody has ever died, though, because of a lack of a park, whereas people have died because of our lack of sidewalks in some places. And I think we're seeing kind of a, people need the bicycle and pet safety improvements, they would like the parks facilities. And I remember reading, and I'm still trying to find the paper, I remember reading a paper a while back about Washington State local levies and bond issues that showed that bonds and levies with multiple topics performed worse at the ballot than did really tightly-defined ballot measures. So I am looking at this, I am a little worried about kind of mashing parks and bike/pet safety together into kind of a Franken, a Franken sign of a ballot measure. And just from looking at, you know, just looking at the data since the weekend, I am starting to think that the appetite is more there for pet and bike safety. And I think we can continue our work on parks, and I would argue that even if we went forward just bike and pet safety, that wouldn't preclude us from doing improvements at St. Edward's State Park and other ballfields and other parks needs as we go on. That's just my initial thoughts from looking at this. Thank you for all your work.
Councilmember Smith.
I do have one other comment, if nobody else had any other comments to make.
No, I think you're ready to move on.
Okay. One of the things I thought was very compelling here was the top priority list on number one, and then that combined with the comments regarding Juanita Drive and 68th and the sidewalks. And I thought that that laid out something, I think, that we all in the community know is a significant corridor that is lacking continuity in the sidewalks and the safety issue. And it really seemed like it kind of played out in this data with people identifying the number one on this slide 16, but also in the support for Juanita and 68th Avenue Northeast. And then lastly, I wanted to ask you, because you had mentioned something about the, or somebody had talked about those most likely to vote. And I noticed something interesting in this, and that was on the parks and rec thing, it said age 50 and older. That had actually a higher percentage. It was the only one out of the parks and rec measures that had stronger support in that age group than it did for the pet bike safety in that age group. And I thought that was interesting, because in all the other groups, the funding for, it was 52%.
Fifty-two to 55.
Versus 55. And I wanted to ask you, is that even statistically significant, or is that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move along with your part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So what I will do is, I'll go through our outreach efforts, other outreach efforts, and kind of try to bring together what we learned from community engagement and what we learned from the phone survey, things you just heard from Dominic. So I'll try to go through it pretty quickly, and then we can talk about next steps, which is what I'm sure you all would like to know about, and we can have that discussion. So let me open that up really quick, and which one is it? Oh, must be this one. Oh, that one, yes. There you go. I was looking for PowerPoint symbol. Okay, so what we've done, I'll talk a little bit about the methodology, kind of what we've done, how we got people involved, and then we'll talk about general findings and then next steps. So what we really wanted to learn when we set out on this Imagine Kenmore journey is to try to understand what different proposed projects meant for different residents in the city, and then what kind of new ideas people had, and then try to kind of validate what we hear in our community engagement through this randomized survey. And we wanted to hear from all residents in Kenmore and engage as many as we can. What we did is, was really multifaceted. We did a lot of work raising awareness about this initiative, so we had a dedicated website, we created a video, getting people kind of energized about it. We had an email address where people could send comments. There were lots of email notifications sent out, lots of Facebook ads. Leslie did a great job getting ads in all these different places, and papers, and newsletters. We sent them through flyers, we sent it to PTAs in different schools. We had banners, you probably saw them for a number of days, kind of on the corner here by the city hall and lots of other places. There were yard signs. And there was a dedicated computer here at city hall that was, people could use to enter comments. And then we also did an event in the library, and people, and they had a dedicated computer there, so people could use the, send their comments and just learn about the project. So that was raising awareness. We also asked for input. We kind of had lots of different channels where people could provide input. So we had a workshop, we had a, that library event I mentioned, there was an interactive online map. It had a map of the city, people could go in, they could zero in on a specific location, put a comment about bikes or pedestrian projects or parks, and then they could kind of vote, like, dislike. There was a short online survey. Now, that was very much non-randomized survey, self-selected group of people, of course, so I think we got some valuable feedback, but it's not an indication of the entire mood of the entire city as Dominic's work is. And then some people sent general email comments to you, as well as city staff, as well as to the email address. And then EMC conducted the survey to kind of confirm the sentiment. So just a few quick numbers, we had actually quite a really, quite a good showing at the open house. A number of you were here as well, lots of people were here, they were energized, they had lots of ideas of how to improve Kenmore, it was a fun event. We had lots of people complete the online survey, at more than 300 responses, that's really good. Lots of people went on the interactive map and either put in comments or they liked other projects. At the library event, it was quite a few people, and then there were a few other comments. And then, as Dominic mentioned, there were 300 phone interviews. So I just, this slide is to kind of highlight the differences between the two, the kind of the community engagement and then the randomized phone survey. Community engagement, you know, as much as we tried to reach as many residents as we could, it's still a self-selected group of people. So you, you know, we got really great input, but it needs to be kind of weighed differently than the information that we got from the randomized survey. What the randomized survey did not give us is comments on specific projects that are within cities' planning documents, and that's what we were able to get through the community engagement, and that was really valuable. We were also able to generate some new ideas in the community engagement that we didn't get in the phone survey. And then the community engagement did not really ask anything about funding, we just kind of left it for later, and then, but the survey did some testing around that. So those are the key differences. So you just saw a few of these slides that Dominic went through, so I won't get stuck on these for very long, but we learned that current satisfaction with parks is higher than satisfaction with pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. There is strong support for both parks and pet bike improvements, the sidewalks, the natural open space, the waterfront access, you know, trails, and then more pet and bike projects. That was kind of all at the top, as you just learned. Now, I'll talk a little bit about, I'll focus on parks for the next few slides, and then I'll focus separately on pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So for, in terms of parks, it was interesting to see that aside from the waterfront access, the priorities that kind of surfaced through the two different outreach methods were a bit different. So in the phone survey, we saw this, the acquiring and protecting natural open space, and as Councilmember Curtis noticed, noted, it's, it wasn't really clear what people really meant by that, and it could be just about enjoyment and having better access. And then there were other priorities around Lake Washington View Park, building indoor recreation facilities, and increasing picnic facilities in parks. So we saw that. When we did the analysis on all the different comments we got for the community engagement, the top things that, the top mentions were sports facilities, so the athletic fields, the waterfront access. Quite a few people talked about just general park maintenance, dog parks, and then there's the walking and nature trails. The waterfront-related projects, as you heard many times already tonight, had the most support, and that included lots of different types of projects, trails and boardwalks, beach access viewpoints, and it was more than just Lake Washington waterfront, it included the creek and the river waterfronts as well. The natural open space, it just, it was, I think I had similar question to Councilmember Curtis, is kind of what does it mean? But there were quite a few people that basically, in the community engagement, that did say that improving access to that open space was important to them. So if we view it from that viewpoint, it makes sense, I think. And then the sports facilities is an interesting one, especially being in the audience here, listening to the support around the ballfields issue. There were definitely a lot of people saying that we need more ballfields, but it was really interesting to see that it did not raise to the top in the phone survey. Maybe it was how it was worded, I'm not sure, but it's, it was an interesting outcome, the difference that we saw. There were lots of new park ideas that people generated, the walking in nature trails in the sense of connecting the different parks within the city, so kind of viewing areas and boardwalks, and then just connecting all the other parks. A number of people thought community garden would be a great idea and kind of a low-cost way to get the community energized and provide a different amenity. Programming, alternative recreation, there were all sorts of interesting ideas, some of these, I wasn't even sure what they were, like the Gaga pit. Who knows what it is? But it was interesting to see, cricket fields, parkour. So everyone, you know, people have different interests, and that all comes out in these types of engagements. And then swimming pools, other parks, lots of other ideas, but these were the most common ones. And then when we looked at the top five kind of potential parks projects that were already in some cities' planning documents, like the Prose Plan and others, these are the ones that received the most support through the community outreach. So, and you'll see that we put little orange stars next to the ones that are waterfront-related feature, at least have waterfront-related features, like a boathouse or something like that. So it, all kind of, all roads lead back to the waterfront here. But Log Boom Park, waterfront improvements, Radidendron Park, Morelands Park, Squires Landing, and Swamp Creek Nature Trail Development, those were the five that got the most comments, the most support, the most quote-unquote likes. Moving on to pedestrian bike priorities, sidewalks, bike lanes, and the whole issue around safe routes to school were the top, what we saw both in phone survey and community engagement comments. So sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks is a big deal, school routes. We didn't ask about school routes specifically in the phone survey, but I think if we did, we would have heard that it is a big, important issue, because we heard it really clearly in the community engagement. And then cross, so actually, I'll move forward and come back to crosswalks. So in terms of sidewalks, there were a number of locations that rose up through the community engagement, and it was interesting to hear the 73rd Avenue segment, because that was mentioned quite a few times. And I don't know if it's exactly in those, in that same, you know, south and north boundary, but I think it is the area close to schools, and people would like to make sure that it's safe. But Juanita Drive, 61st Avenue, and 181st, and also 61st and SR 522, and then just general connections to Burke Gilman. And then, as I mentioned, school routes were, we heard quite a bit about making that safer. Crosswalks was really interesting, similar to ballfields. We heard from quite a few people that crosswalks are important, and there could be better, could be improvements made for crosswalks, but we didn't hear that specifically confirmed in the phone survey. So that was another interesting finding. New ideas were suggested by residents. So the most popular comment was about improved pedestrian bike access from 61st to Log Boom Park. So it's crossing 522 in that S curve that goes kind of down, lots of comments about conflicts between pedestrians and bicycles, and cars, and just difficulty of that access. So people were suggesting that something could be, definitely be done there to have a better connection. Also, in terms of bike comment, people were very much excited about adding a bike lane to the bridge on the 68th Avenue Northeast. And then just general trails that link to Burke Gilman, because there are not a lot of access points. And then these top, these similar to parks, these are the top projects that we heard the most support for. So the crossing at 522, that's, you know, overpass or underpass, was definitely supported far and wide. Juanita Drive, pedestrian and bike improvements, similar to what we heard in the survey, in the phone survey. Sidewalk along 202nd Street. And then in number four, we actually included this potential new project of improving that S curve. So it's not something that was in any city planning documents, but it was enough, generated enough support that we were able to kind of put it in these top five projects. And then more, number five, is this is more work to do on Juanita Drive, traffic calming. This one, we've seen many times tonight. This one, we've seen many times tonight already and talked about it, so I don't think I need to talk much more about the picture that we saw in terms of support for parks and pad and bicycle safety. And then jumping to the next steps, what we have been discussing with the team at the city is getting together with experts, both, for both transportation and parks, and that's Farr and Pierce and HBB, Landscape Architects, and developing a project list, a potential package for both, that we could bring to your attention in about a month. Now, we're not gonna, I think we've heard pretty loud and clear that mixing the measures is, is probably not the best idea, but what we would like to do is bring you those two separate potential packages and have more discussion about what would make sense, given everything we know. Here are some potential projects, here are some potential costs, and then if we, when, what, which one may we want, which package should we put in front of the voters, and when? And then how could we potentially fund other piece, you know, the other side of it, whichever doesn't go into funding ballot measure? So just, we would like to come back to you with a little bit more concrete information besides having these, you know, top five projects. We want to bring back the costs, and we want to be able to talk about those projects some more. There's also, in our budget, we do have a, we, I think we will need to determine those next steps in terms of community outreach, if it's going to make sense to go back to the community and say, well, here are all these different projects, what do you think should be at the top? I think we should, we need to talk about that. And then what we also have in our budget is EMC can do another test of, of an actual ballot package. So what Dominic and his team did so far was really pretty general. It kind of took the temperature of the community, and we got some ideas about support, but we really, the way they could do a separate poll in terms of funding ballot measure would be a bit different, and then it could really give you a much better idea on whether to specifically put that package on the ballot, or maybe do some more work with the community before doing that. So that would be something that we would consider as well in the near future.
So if we go away over the next couple of weeks and put together kind of a parks package and a, a pad bike package based on, the great thing about getting all this super feedback is a super feedback, but what we're trying to do is inform how to put these packages together. So what Natasha's saying is we'll take our best try at it and bring those back to talk to you. If we can get back to you in early February, that gives us February, March, to try to talk to the community some more, maybe do another statistically valid survey, because I think our hope is that if we do want to put something on the ballot for this fall, that we make that decision in April.
And one more thing I forgot to mention is we're also working on putting together a funding mechanisms paper that we can provide, and we can discuss with you and the rest of the city staff. What are our, what are our options for funding parks and pedestrian bicycle capital improvements? And so what are our options here, besides only, you know, ballot measures?
Questions?
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Can you tell me on the item number four on page 21, where it says new, and it has to do with the 61st to Log Boom, is that being addressed in the, in the 522 West B project?
It is, I did, yes. So that actually is under construction right now as part of the 522 West A project. That leg is closed right now. We're regrading it, we're actually, we're constructing new sidewalk on the east side. We'll have sidewalk on the east side, not the other side where the big wall is. So new sidewalk down to the roadway. So brand-new down the hill, we don't have improvement though from there to the park.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
If I, if I could just jump in on that, I can't remember, was the Dominic's survey or where I heard this, but I thought the concern was also just with bicycles crossing 61st right there, that multi-leg intersection. Did I hear that somewhere?
I think it was in one, in some of the comments that we received.
Yeah, okay.
Gaga pits, modern-day dodgeball.
I've learned, I've had to, I had to Google and see what that is.
I want to play that.
What's that?
I want to play that.
That's common. My daughter went to sixth-grade camp, and she came back, she talked about Gaga for weeks.
Really?
Yep.
It's actually, it was a suggestion to have it right there next to the skate park, is where, that suggestion was on the map, the interactive map.
Could be a good fit. Parkour is where you jump from high places to other places, to buildings, to buildings, to all of them. It's very athletic. This, this is Gaga pit, that's a Gaga pit. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chris?
No, thanks.
I know there's no action for us this time.
Correct.
We thank you for the information, we appreciate it. Got to see another side of this now, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item. Is update on St. Edward's Ball Field, this bit. This is the, the Community Development Director's evening tonight. You're on a roll.
Well, I would like to share that with the city manager, Mr. Carl Lindsay. So Rob, do you want, I'm going to let Rob kick this off, and I'll jump in whenever he wants me to.
You can go ahead and intro it. I'm gonna, I would like to pull up the, the agenda item on the two-ball field configuration, so I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay. So this is an update on the St. Edward State Park Ball Field, and there's been a lot of public comment this evening, and seems to be a lot of support for moving forward with looking at renovating the ball fields. In, at the November 9th council meeting, the council directed staff to begin discussions with the Washington State Parks regarding the ball field and potential of developing a lease that would allow the city to improve and operate those existing ball fields. And so the city is currently pursuing those negotiations with state parks. And there was a letter attached to the agenda item from the city, which kind of outlines an approach to begin those negotiations, and those are moving forward, and those terms are being developed. In terms of the athletic field design, the city will be engaging Bruce Deason Associates, Landscape Architect, to develop a two-ball field layout, which would be, there we are, thank you, that's a three-ball field layout, which was an option which was pursued back in 2007, 2008 with state parks, and ultimately didn't move forward. We believe that the two-ball field design would be a better project for several reasons. One, I think it would reduce potential impacts of developing that proposal. And secondly, from a safety standpoint, having three-ball fields in operation at one time is, I don't know, it kind of, may not be the best thing. So the two-ball field proposal is what staff is, is recommending. So that's...
And we think it improves the chances of it being approved by the, being approved by the State Parks Commission, given the camp direction, and that's the document that guides the development of the park, given the camp direction to stay within what I'm calling the dotted lines, which is the historic footprint of the, of the historic ball fields.
So on the design, we will be working out contracts with Bruce Deason Associates for the ball field design, and several other consultants that would support that effort in terms of, with ESA, who would update the wetland delineation and update a mitigation plan, with Group Four, who would provide the additional survey work for surveying in the wetland delineation flags, updating the tree survey, and then with Petite or another firm, who would look at civil work for a surface water plan and potentially a parking lot layout. So that's sort of where we would be in terms of moving this forward with a design that would then support the lease negotiations effort, to make sure that we have the information available for the State Parks Commission as they look at the lease terms. So Rob, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I will, but, but can you talk about dollars, contract numbers, just so council knows what we're up to?
Sure. So in the packet, there was, the two-field ball field estimate was about $927,000. And in, of that amount, the, an estimate was about 200 and, to, almost $203,000 in soft costs, which included 10% contingency. I don't have a complete figure of what those soft costs would be, but I can tell you what I know right now. So for the Landscape Architect to pursue the ball field design, we're looking at a $43,500 amount. For ESA to complete the environmental work, about $35,000. For the survey work, about $6,000. I don't have a scope yet for the civil work. Additional costs, we would have to then, after the conceptual work on the mitigation plan, we would need a full-blown mitigation plan, which my, an estimate would be about an additional $40,000. Permit fees, if we get to that level of pursuing permits, my best guess at this point would be an additional $8,000. So from what I know, it looks like we would be well within what is currently estimated for the ball field cost for the, for the soft costs.
Okay. So as you can see, Debbie has the lead on the development and getting the environmental work done. And I have the lead on negotiating the actual lease with state parks. And what we're recommending is a lease option, and it would be a lease option where we could exercise the lease within what I'm proposing to be a 30-month period. So we would have a lease option agreement that would last for 30 months, barring any delays from SEPA issues or appeals. And what we are proposing to do is that this lease option would include a fully negotiated lease, so that when we go to exercise the lease, there's nothing left to negotiate. And then at the time we exercise the lease, then SEPA and other work would be completed. So for the actual term of the lease, again, this is subject to negotiations, and I'll keep you updated as we move forward in negotiations, but I'm recommending a term of 30 years that requires unanimous Parks Commission Board approval. I'm proposing rent at $0 per year, and in exchange, state parks gets an improved facility, no longer has to maintain the ball fields, and reaps the additional benefit of more park users, which is high on their list of priorities to bring more users into their parks, and therefore sell more Discover passes. City to bear the costs of improving and maintaining and operating the ball fields. We can subcontract scheduling and other operational tasks if we want, that will be at our option. The type of turf, grass or synthetic, will be at the city's discretion. And let me read to you what the camp says about that. It says, "Continue use of natural grass on fields unless subsequent assessment shows artificial turf has comparable to less environmental impacts. No adverse health conditions, low operating expense, and does not impair park management." We think that synthetic turf might have a lot of benefits and be worth pursuing. We want to definitely have that option at our discretion. We think that we could meet the environmental test, because we're talking about less fertilizer, no, you know, going from fertilizer to no fertilizer on synthetic, no watering, no mowing, and better wear and tear. There's also the, the cushiony pellets that are used to make it a softer surface. There's different organic materials, including corn-based materials that you can use, as opposed to the rubber, which is kind of controversial right now. And so there's ways that we can, I believe, make it a more beneficial environmentally and health-wise. Also, the camp says field lighting is not recommended. I'm recommending that we be able to come back at a later date, maybe a couple of years from now or whenever, to talk to the state parks about lighting, but that it not be precluded in the current lease agreement. But maybe we need future park approval for it if we want to do it. I think hours of operation will discuss with State Parks Commission. There's a proposed, there's going to be a proposed retreat center use there, and so we'll want to coordinate with them. But for now, I'm saying that we should, that the city will be able to establish reasonable operation, reasonable, reasonable hours of operation. City may be able to charge use fees for ball field users. Such fees shall be established by the city. And that we'll be able to use public parking, and that there will be no parking on the brand-new improved fields. And there'll be other issues like scheduling conflicts and coordinating events and things like that that we'll need to work out. So those are the main deal points of a proposed lease agreement. I've already been in discussions with state parks on that. Last month, I sent them a letter telling them that we wish to begin negotiations, and I'm working on a memorandum of understanding with them. I just gave them my comments on that last week, and we should be signing that soon. It's a non-binding memorandum of understanding that talks about how we're negotiating this lease. The goal, though, is to bring this lease option proposal to the State Parks Commission at their March 29th and/or 30th Parks Commission meeting. And it'd be nice if I can have city council approval on that lease option prior, prior to going to the Parks Commission meeting. And lastly, like I said earlier, we will be doing SEPA work when we actually exercise the option. That said, I think the State Parks Commission would want to know certain things, like the wetland condition, and how we would propose to mitigate any impacts to wetlands, things like that. And so we, Debbie is working to do a lot of environmental and other updates to the property, including design updates, that we can still bring to the Parks Commission so that they can make an informed decision. Lastly, an ordinance that we'll be taking to you between now and sometime in March is an amendment to the Public Utility Exception Ordinance. Right now, cities may be, may have the option of going into wetlands for utility reasons, but not necessarily park reasons like this. In this particular case, to build these two ball fields, we will need to encroach on wetland somewhat. We're still trying to figure out exactly how much we'll be encroaching on that wetland, but we'll need to make an adjustment to the Public Utilities Exception Ordinance that allows us for public park uses, and under very limited circumstances, to go onto a wetland for a purpose like this, especially a purpose like this where you really don't have another option or, or way to work around it.
Councilmember Herbie.
So right now, the only group that is regularly using these fields is the, that I can tell when I go to the park, are the cricket players. Is there a way with this layout that we could also accommodate their, their use? Because I would hate for us to make these big improvements and kind of force them out.
Yes, for sure, and thank you for bringing that up. I meant to mention that, but definitely we will have a, the cricket pitch installed as part of this project.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Danuski.
Thank you, everybody, for working so quickly on this. I like everything here, I support it, and as a mom of somebody who's had to cart their kids over to 60 acres during rush hour multiple times a week, I like it.
Good. Yeah, Councilmember Smith?
I'd just like to thank you and Debbie Bent for working so quickly and hard on this project. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you very much. And I certainly appreciate your consideration of the cricket pitch, as Councilmember Herbig had, had asked about. And so, the design looks good. There were two soccer fields, and the soccer fields don't impinge on the infield of the ballfields.
Yeah. And I think this goes without saying, based on the reaction I'm getting, but I, I'm assuming that I do have your blessing on the two-ballfield configuration and also the deal points that I mentioned. Okay?
Yeah. And I'm just, knowing what we know about, now about the Bastier fields, I'm just, I'm, want to be assured or looking for assurances down the road that drainage issues are, are covered, because we certainly don't want the kids stomping through puddles as they're playing, so.
Yeah. If we can go synthetic, that'll make a big difference. But we are going to, I, I often say I'm not a big fan of over-engineering, but in this case, we're going to over-engineer it.
The drainage, anyway.
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda. I've now lost it, but just give me a second here.
Planning Commission.
I understand. Yes. Thank you. Planning Commission. Won't turn.
Would you like our iPad?
Would you like my PC?
No. This is working well. It's just not going to the next page. But that's okay. Planning Commission. Ms. Bent?
Thank you very much. So, on December 14th, you appointed Daniel Ross to fill the position on the Planning Commission vacated by Angela Kugler. And at the January 52 meeting, we learned that Mr. Ross is moving to Kirkland. And the regulations require you to be a resident, to be a Planning Commission member. Mr. Ross has submitted an email with his resignation, so we now have a vacancy. And so, what I'm looking for is a council direction on filling that vacancy. And personally, I would like that vacancy to be filled as soon as possible so the Planning Commission can continue the work that they're currently doing. You have the option of selecting the number-two candidate on your alternate list, which would be Mr. Olson. We contacted the candidates back in December before you made the appointment, and all four candidates at that time were willing to serve. We haven't followed up with the remaining three candidates. So, I would just like to suggest that if you settle on wanting to appoint Mr. Olson, I would also ask that you would say that if, for some reason, Mr. Olson isn't available, that we could move to the third candidate without having to come back to you again. Thank you.
Yeah. I think that makes perfect sense, that we go down the list, and you have authority to try them in order of, I mean, are we all in agreement with that? Yeah, that's everybody's in agreement with that one. So.
Perfect.
Yes. If you take that list and just move down the list as needed.
Okay.
When you run out of the list, then come back.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your direction.
Wonderful. Next item is staff reports.
Yeah. And if I can, if I can just introduce this first one, we're going to have Brendan Jernigan in my office, and the artists and St. Vincent de Paul representative come up here. And a week or two ago, we thought we had kind of a problem that we really needed your guidance on. But just in the last few days, that problem has diminished. It's still there a little bit, but through a lot of creativity and team effort and good problem-solving skills, I think the issue is now a smaller issue than we thought maybe even a week ago. Think that's fair? And, and they'll tell you the story on how we got here and why it's much less of a problem than we thought, thought earlier. It's, it's actually kind of a fun and exciting story, and again, testament to creative minds coming together. So, with that, I will turn it over to Brendan Jernigan.
All right. So, first of all, just as introductions, I don't think Amberly Colley and Stacy Adman need introduction, but there they are, two artists here. But to my left, who you might not have met before, is Rob Hertzler, who is the Regional Director of Stores for King and Snohomish Counties. And then, to my right is, who you've seen before, Jim McFarland, who is the Marketing and Communications Director for St. Vincent de Paul. So, we met about three months ago. We came before you with a proposal for a mural at St. Vincent de Paul. And unanimously, you approved the idea of the City Manager's Office moving forward with an agreement for this mural. And in that time, we've been hard at work in negotiations, and it's been a little bit complex just because of the nature of, of the beast, that there's three parties involved, the artists, St. Vincent de Paul, and the city, as well as the need for community support in the form of fundraising. So, that's been part of the complication, but it also is a great opportunity. And we've come a long way. There's been a lot of discussion and things that appeared hang-ups that then turned into opportunities. And I think this is just the last of those, and I think we're almost there. So, what brought us here is we had two remaining issues in the agreements. We have two agreements, one between the city and the artists, the contract for artwork, and the other, which is a lease agreement for the use of the wall at St. Vincent de Paul, between the city and St. Vincent de Paul. And it's in that lease agreement that we've run into two areas of concern. The first has to do with wall preparation, getting the wall to a state that the, that is sufficient for the artists to begin their artwork. And the other is the long-term maintenance of the wall. And I'll go over both of those and, and discuss what options we have, and then seek your direction. So, for the wall preparation, in the proposal we presented to you three months ago, there was the understanding that St. Vincent de Paul would take care of that, the wall preparation. But there was a little bit of differing assumptions on what that meant and what was required for the wall. And the artists had, had a better idea of what needed to be done that, that maybe we didn't have. And so, St. Vincent de Paul, with their limited financial resources, had dedicated around $300 for that, but that's not sufficient to, to do all the work that's needed. But we have since gotten an estimate on that work, thanks to a friend of, of Galls, and it was quite a bit lower than we actually expected. It's a $1,500 estimate, and that estimate is, was printed out for each of you. So, that's leaving a $1,200 gap that needs to be covered. And so, the artists had prepared five options for us, knowing that there is this gap. What can we do? The first option is to move forward with what we do, what we've been doing, and have the city cover that $1,200. That's, you know, kind of just moving forward as we are. And then, there's the option on the other end of just stopping the project. And then, in between, there's three other options that I won't go over in too great of detail. But there's scaling down the mural, so it wouldn't require, and so it's a shorter-term mural and wouldn't require quite as much preparation, because we understand that it, it might just kind of deteriorate over time, and that's okay. Another option is to forego the wall preparation and paint the, paint the mural on panels. The idea being if we're going to invest more money, maybe in something that could be permanent, that we could scatter the panels around the city later on at a, you know, at a point that the building is, is sold or demolished or whatever in the future. And the other option was just to find another location for the mural if, if need be. So, those are the options before us for, for the wall prep. And do you, do you want to discuss the wall preparation before I move on to the long-term maintenance with that, and we can receive direction on that first?
If, if Amberly Gahl-Colley could talk about how we got to the $1,200 gap, because I think that's a pretty remarkable part of this story. And we, you know, we thought it was a several-thousand-dollar problem about a week ago, and now it's a $1,200 problem, if you want to call it that, or maybe actually opportunity now. And can you tell us that story?
Sure. I just want to first acknowledge a couple of our community partners in the building here. First, Don Swanson. You know, Don. He's been a great supporter of mine since the very beginning, since I came out of grad school and my first community, my community event was here in Kenmore. The second is one of the builders or the elders in our community, Kent Sturgis. He's here from, representing the Heritage Society. I just wanted to acknowledge Don first. So, this is, this is a very interesting story. So, as you all know, you had the assumption that we were going to start designing the mural, starting December 1st. But these contract negotiations, realizing that the wall prep, what we thought, there was just a little bit of, compared to what was thought by the other partners, was different. And what that specifically, we were concerned about was there was some water damage on the wall. And we just, we didn't know what that was due to. And I always have curiosity. Well, what is it? Is it structural? Is it, is it the roof leaking? Is it, is there a broken pipe? And so, with some very creative, creativeness, we had different members of the community go and figure out who that, you know, what was the problem. The problem was, was that it just wasn't prepped right in the first place. Simple, simple as that. And actually, my father-in-law told me that in the first place. It just needs to be sandblasted down, girl, and you need to paint it back up. I remember Noel Lumber just slapping the paint on. So, I thought, well, shoot, that's going to cost a lot of money because of the environmental impact, the sandblasting, bringing it back down and back up. So, I thought, geez, who's going to do an estimate? Who can do an estimate for painting? St. Vincent de Paul came and said, we, we just can't afford to pay for an estimate. I, and so, that's when I went to, and writing you all a letter explaining the situation, going to Rob. And Brendan was out of town at the time, and I said, what, what can we do, Rob? And he said, well, you know, is there anyone in the community? So, I started thinking in the, in the doldrums of the holiday. And one of the original sponsors of the 2013, Councilmember Van Ness, you remember that public lecture that was sold out, or standing room only, Steven Armfeld of RC Painting, the largest painting company in the state of Washington. He is an avid Seattle outboard racer, and he sponsored the origami boat building workshop. He paid for all the materials. He has been over a 30-year contractor of painting. He painted commercially in Australia where he's from. And I called him, said, hey, I need some help. He said, what? Gahl, yeah, let's do it. Where is the wall? He went down, that was on Tuesday of last week. He wasn't able to get there till Friday, and then his whole company had, had Windows 10 crashes. So, that's why you have kind of a scruffy-looking proposal. And he said, I went to the owner of the company, and I told him about how important this community mural was. And even though it should be about $3,000 or more, we're only going to do it for 1,500 plus tax. We want to donate that. We want to help make this happen. We believe in the community. I want to continue to make Kenmore the best place ever. And P.S., when I was living and raised in Australia, I saw murals on every single wall. Why aren't there more murals in the United States? And so, here we are today with this mural, with the wall prep proposal.
Thank you so much. And I'm actually, I'm glad you had an opportunity to, to mention also the community supporters we have here, because that's one thing I, I glossed over here, is just the level of support that there is, that, that the artists report that already there's, you know, people who have promised the amount of funding that we were promising to match as a city, that funding is already pledged. And so, that's pretty remarkable. And it's, and then to see other people coming together for the estimate and, and for doing this prep work is truly remarkable. And then, on that same note, also, I mean, I'm impressed also to see what St. Vincent de Paul has done in terms of, you know, this is outside of normal scope of work, but the time that they put into the discussions and negotiations has been truly impressive. So, there's just a lot of support here, and we'd love to get your direction on, on what to do next.
So, basically, what they're looking for us is 1,200 plus tax, so this project can get underway.
Yep.
Comments? Questions?
That's part A.
Anybody want to, part A?
So, that was the first issue about wall preparation. Then, there's a long-term maintenance, which we can discuss. If you want to discuss that first and then give overall direction, that's.
Well, fine. Is there more money involved than the 1,200?
Well, so what it is, is with the long-term mural maintenance, again, in the proposal, it had been stated that St. Vincent de Paul would, would maintain the wall. And maybe due to lack of communication beforehand about what that means, St. Vincent de Paul is willing to do the, the.
We're willing to do minor maintenance. What concerns us is if 10 years from now, somebody says the wall needs to be repainted, we're not going to have the, the money to spend $10,000 or $20,000 on fixing a wall when we're trying to keep people in their homes for $100 a throw for rent per month or whatever. So, what we're proposing back is simply, could we write some language in the agreement that would allow us to jointly raise money with the city to, to make sure we're able to do that? That's really the only change. There's no money, we're not asking you for money. We're asking you to join us in a partnership to raise money.
Right. So, to clarify, currently, and so currently, the contract, how it's stated is that the, the maintenance is at the sole cost and expense of St. Vincent de Paul in, that, you know, even if it's needing to repaint and recontract with artists. And so, that's where the problem is, if it requires recontracting with an artist or painting, that's outside of a kind of obligation that they, St. Vincent de Paul can take on. So, the options are for us to have some language that says, in the case of that, then jointly, as a partnership, the city and St. Vincent de Paul raise the money. Or the option of the city just saying, well, that's something that we'd be willing to do in the case of, you know, if we would put up the money to do that. So, those are the options on the table.
So, you want to do this in two stages, the 1,200 first, and then we'll talk about the other?
Excuse me, Mayor Baker. Could I just say that Steven Armfeld just wanted to, he's sorry he wasn't able to make it here tonight. But the products that he is going to be using will ensure that this mural will, will be in perfect condition for over 10 years. The UVA, UVB coat, the anti-graffiti coat, will need to be reapplied at the 10-year mark. And this is what all the municipalities use in Las Vegas, in Los Angeles, San Diego, et cetera, for, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Councilmember Smith?
Actually, you, I think you just answered part of what my comment was. I'm actually more concerned about the long-term commitment than I am the $1,200, because we know what 1,200 is. I, it concerns me a little bit if we try to, if we assume too much responsibility just not knowing what the future holds for this mural, which is going to be incredible. But I would like it to be as joint in a partnership as possible.
Right. And, and private funding.
Ideally, yes.
Yeah. So.
I mean, we're the, I mean, you know how it goes. When you, partnerships are great, but when you're the partner with the deepest pockets, you oftentimes get put in a situation.
So, do we want to deal with the 1,200 first and then, and then deal with the long-term?
Sure.
So, then, I guess we can entertain a motion to, to approve the 1,200 for the, for the prep.
I'll move to do that.
And I'll second. So, is there any further discussion on the 1,200 for the, for the prep work? Councilmember Curtis, you got a thumbs up?
I'm just good for it.
Okay.
And if I could just clarify, that 1,200 is, is an estimate. There's going to be sales tax. Okay. Just want to get that on the record.
And the 300 will be contributed by St.
Right. That's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. So, fine. Let's do this with a roll call.
Right. Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right. Now, the longer, the, the second issue here with the long-term maintenance. I understand St. Vincent de Paul doesn't want to be on I understand St. Vincent de Paul doesn't want to be on the hook and I think that we're sort of all in agreement that we don't want to be on the hook. So your suggestion was a contract modification where we jointly try to.
Raise funds.
Raise funds.
Right.
Yeah, I think the wording that your folks had proposed was a joint fundraising effort.
Councilmember Curtis?
I'm in favor of that, but I guess I would like to see some language in there if in 10 or 15 or 20 years, at some point it's decided that we don't want to spend the money and we can't get volunteers to pay for it, that the option is we won't have the mural anymore.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I don't want a commitment that we're forever going to do this wall.
Yes, no, we understand that too.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable and, and I know this says that they're hoping to have a long-term maintenance for 20 years, but one of the things about it is we know the building's old anyway and you wonder what the remaining economic life will be in 10 years of the building. So it's, there are these, you know, these cost benefits that we just don't know. So as long as there's some mutual agreement that we'll do it jointly or not do it at all.
And I think, I think that's an interesting idea specifically because, you know, one of the things I think about is as much as I trust these artists and I'm excited about what they do, say 10 years down the road, people feel differently about, I don't know, the imagery or whatever, I, there is that concern, what if people don't want to renew it and we're obligated to renew it? But if we had the idea of they're funding it, we would know if they support it or not, you know, and hopefully they're excited about it and they could donate those funds to do it. So I think that's, to me, a reasonable idea.
We totally agree with, with that. We actually had some discussions internally about what if, what if a new city council comes in and says, we no longer want the mural. So do we paint over it or what do we do? And so that's a very valid point, that people may not want the mural in 10 years. Maybe the direction has changed or something.
The reason why Stacy and I insisted that there be 20 years is because our community is going to be one-third partner. That's the first reason. The second reason is that Stacy and I are donating a significant amount of our labor fee as well as a significant amount of hours in the prep, in, in building up to this moment where this contract is being signed. And so what we're concerned about is, is if that mural was painted over in 10 years, that there would be a public outcry. But, like you said, well, maybe, maybe the whole community would turn upside down and nobody would want the mural. Well, that's, you know, that's true, you know?
It would be a good litmus test, the fundraising to see.
It would be, mhm. But we put that 20-year provision in because we are concerned that we are raising a significant amount of money for, through the community with that one-third model. And we want to, we want to be considerate of, of those, of those dollars that are donated.
Absolutely. Councilmember Smith?
That sounds great. And I, and I do, I, even though I sound like I'm maybe overly concerned about the city's liability on this, I, what I don't want to be lost here is that I really appreciate the effort and the time and commitment you have and the commitment from Kent and Dawn Swanson with the financial part he's brought to the table. So that, that's very meaningful and it does mean a lot. Being a partnership has a lot of value and so that's, I'm glad you brought that up.
What is surprising to me, Councilmember Smith, is that this mural is on a private wall and another longtime business member is supporting this mural on a private wall financially. It, it's so, it means so much and that the city is willing to collaborate with a private business and beautify the community through that collaboration. This is so exciting to me.
So, any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Have we addressed the possibility? I think we've sort of talked about putting this on plywood panels so that if the wall goes away for whatever reason, how do we keep the mural? And if we want to keep the mural?
So.
And might it be worthwhile investing in the ability to, to relocate it in 20 years or in 10 years or whenever?
Yeah, just a few things on that. First of all, is just noting the, the budget requirement that that's an estimated 10,000, which is, you know, I mean, it could be more or less than that. And I'm not sure exactly what St. Vincent de Paul's, I mean, I've heard a little bit in private discussion, but.
Well, we've, we've thought about that and one of the things we might want to consider would be to use digi, high, high-format digital photography to shoot the section so that it could be preserved forever. So that depending on whatever happened, I mean, we, there's language in the agreement that if, for example, if we were going to sell the building, we have to give the city ample notice and that sort of stuff. But on this question, it's, it's really interesting. Do you put it on some sort of surface, which I would defer to gall on that, but I do know from my own background, you could use high-format digital photography to preserve it so that it could be moved anywhere. Essentially, all the billboards everywhere are done that way. I mean, you know, you don't paint on billboard surfaces anymore. It's all done with digital photography that's pasted on the billboards and it lasts for a long time. So that's one thing to think about, no question.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I'm personally not much of a fan of the plywood panels. I, I like the idea of the art being on the wall and it is what it is and it lasts as long as it lasts and that's kind of part of the fun.
All right, so the contract modifications have been, has been, as has been outlined, is satisfactory with, with everybody? All right, so how about if we just do a motion then to, to allow city staff to draw contract modifications as outlined with our city attorney's approval? I saw some conferring going on there, so.
It has my approval.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion to, to approve the contract changes as recommended.
So I'm a second.
Move Dan seconded. Okay, any further discussion? Clerk, please take your role on this one.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask real quick, and that, so that gives us the authority to just go forward and make the contract changes with city attorney's approval and?
Right, as, as the modification is recommended.
Great, thank you.
City manager, comments?
Yeah, just a couple items. Earlier at the beginning of the meeting, you heard Mr. Carl Michaelman talking about connection fees with North Shore Utility District and the timing on when those are paid. I need your direction on whether you want me spending time on that. I was a little concerned when I heard about it. In my last city where we ran water and sewer utility, we required those connection fees to be paid at building permit, not at plat approval. I think that makes more sense because you can approve a plat and take years to build on it and so to pay connection fees on parcels that you may never build on or may take a very long time to build on, doesn't sit well with me. That said, in the almost four years I've been here, it hasn't really come up except for in this one case. We haven't heard concerns from the development community about it except for in this one case. So I'd like to, number one, find out if it is a problem and if it is a sense of heartburn for the development community. And Brian Hampson is already doing a little bit of homework on that. He's checking with a few sample developments that have occurred in the city and find, trying to find out if they did have to pay at the timing that NUD says they have to pay. And like to do our own survey to see if, what other utilities are doing and to really see if it's a problem or not and just get a sense. And if I think it is, I'll come back to you and see what you want me to do about it. Oh, I lost my train of thought, there was something else I was going to say about it. But what's your reaction to that? What do you want me to do?
Councilmember Herbig?
So, Rob, is there any downside to us of just approving the plat regardless of what NUD does? Do we need NUD's okay to approve the plat?
That was my train of thought that I lost, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Kasaguma, can you weigh in on that question?
Yes.
Before he does that, I just want to let you know, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion because there is a potential conflict.
Well, what I'd like to tell you is that this issue involving Mr. Michaelman's plat has been discussed at the staff level. And the staff has concluded that it is appropriate for the city, the staff people, to handle the plat approval, final plat approval, separate from this issue regarding the payment of connection charges upfront that is being required by NUD. So the plat will be moving forward in its normal process, not taking into account NUD's request that the connection charges be paid upfront by the property owner.
So that, that plat will be approved?
The plat will be going forward in its normal course and it's my understanding will all occur before the deadline that Mr. Michaelman mentioned.
I'm just concerned about us spending a lot of staff time, attorney time on, you know, an internal policy issue and another governor, especially if, at the end of the day, it's not going to affect what we're going to do if we're going to approve his plat. I, I don't know, I just, I'm just, I don't want to spend a lot of time and money on this.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So just what Rod said was that Mr. Michaelman not paying the fee can't be a reason for us to hold up the plat approval.
That's correct. So I talked with Mr. Shadow for a moment outside and Mr. Shadow had indicated that there's been instances where he, as a developer in Kenmore or in NUD's area, has, has platted and not paid connection fees.
He has done it? He has done it and not paid?
He has done it and not paid. They haven't required him to pay. So anyway.
So we are going to, this is pretty easy for Brian to do, but we're going to get, we're going to take about three samples, one large plat, one medium and one small, and find out actually what happened in recent history. We're going to do that as step one. But other than that, if we do any more on that, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I also think that you have enough on your plate without.
Having a little trouble hearing you, Mayor.
Pardon?
Having trouble hearing you, Mayor.
I also have concerns about staff spending too much time.
Okay.
On this, so, anyway.
All right, next item is February meetings. We have a lot going on, if you haven't noticed, and we would like you to keep Monday, February 1st, open for a city council meeting, Monday, February 8th, Tuesday, February 16th, because that's the day after President's Day, and then Monday, February 22nd. And I don't think we're going to have a meeting on that 5th, Monday of February, which doesn't happen very often. February 29th leap year. But definitely the 8th, the 1st, the 8th, 16th and 22nd. So if you could please hold those dates for city council meetings, I'd be grateful.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Comments, reports, initiatives? Councilmember Smith?
The only thing I would say is I thought the retreat went very nicely and it was productive. I got a lot out of it and I hope you did too.
Indeed. Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing for me.
I know, Councilmember Van Ness, you have something.
No, I just have a question. Next, next Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Do we have a meeting then?
No, we do not have a meeting on the, what is it, the 18th?
Been canceled.
That's right.
It's on our.
But not on, and it isn't postponed until Tuesday.
Yeah, so the city code says that if a council meeting falls on a holiday, it'll be the very next day.
Yeah.
And so you have a, a meeting per code coming up on Tuesday, the 18th? Is that right?
Tuesday, the 19th.
Tuesday, the 19th.
That's been canceled.
But that has been canceled. Thank you.
All right, well, you didn't mention it, so I will. Deputy Mayor Van Ness was appointed as chair of ETP and as long as we're going with ETP and congratulations to you, Deputy Mayor Van Ness. There is some things that we have to take care of. First of all, Nigel has expressed an interest to be the alternate on the Public Issues Committee for Sound Cities, the Sound Cities Association. And Councilmember Van Ness has indicated that if Councilmember Herbig wanted to do it, that, then he certainly should do it. So if there's no objections, Councilmember Herbig will be the alternate to Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee. I have got a desire to continue on as, as the member. Seashore, Councilmember Herbig and I are, are the two, the two voting people, well, non-voting people, however you want to look at it. There is an alternate position, nobody's really expressed an interest in doing that. We'll keep that the same if nobody objects. Also, ETP, Councilmember Van Ness is the, the chair and the, one of the members, I'm the second, and there is an alternate position and I think that is Councilmember Sperry.
It has been.
And it has been. Unless anybody wants, else wants to, to be the alternate on that committee, we will keep that one the same as we have. The next one is the NSPRA, I believe it is, the North Shore Parks and Recreation Association, that our representative on that is Councilmember Smith. If he's not adverse and nobody has got any heartburn, then we will keep him the same on there. The other one that has sort of gotten lost in the wayside, but Deputy Mayor is doing it and I'm the alternate, is the Wyra 8. If anybody feels they want to make the meetings and they want to do it, it's on Thursday. I believe it's the second or third Thursday of the month.
Every other month.
Every other month. Otherwise, we'll leave that the same.
When do they meet on the Thursdays?
3:00 in the afternoon.
3:00 to 5:00.
Yeah, 3:00 to 5:00. And the other one is a position that, I don't know what's happened to it, but it's sort of disappeared, but that is on the Cascadia Board or is it? Yeah, it's Cascadia Board.
Are you, are you thinking about that or the North Shore Performing Arts Center?
No, that one also.
Okay.
That one sort of disappeared too.
Yeah.
So I don't know, if somebody could find out some information on those two positions.
You have a Cascadia College?
Yeah.
Okay.
Advisory Board on the business school or to something to that effect where we've appointed, pardon?
That was Uda Bothel.
Well, Uda Bothel, it was one of those two.
Okay.
So what's going, is that still available, not available? Can we find out on both of those?
You know, tomorrow morning, I'm going to be at a Bothel Chamber Board meeting and I will see hopefully Kelly Snyder with Uda Bothel and also Dr. Murray with Cascadia tomorrow morning at 7:30.
I think she's right, it's not Cascadia, it is Uda Bothel. And then the other one is the Performing Arts Center where we had a, a position.
So I'll ask them tomorrow.
I doubt about those two. Because the last one, the last one I know of was on the Bothel Board was Randy Eastwood and Councilmember Rogers was the one that was on the, the, yeah, on the board. So anyway.
David, the Performing Arts Center had an advisory.
Right.
Board that I was on that had a couple of meetings.
And then just nothing.
And they just haven't followed up with it, so.
So maybe we can find about those two positions and see if they're even available anymore and if not, we'll find out who wants to do it. I have been nominated, and I'm the only person nominated for vice presidency of Sound Cities Association, which means that I will be vice president this year and move into presidency next year. I'm, you all know, you've heard, I'm going to Olympia on Wednesday and I'm going to be sitting in the front row and we'll let our. gonna be sitting in the front row, and we'll let our presence be known. And I'm also gonna be visiting our delegation, passing out letters on the boathouse. We'll be taking care of that. Triathlon, Speedy Reedy, we're working on plans, we'll have more of that as we move forward, but we're gonna have a triathlon in town. The initial route is 175th Street to 73rd, 73rd, up and around past Kenmore Junior High, back down 68th Street, and this loop maybe five, six times, I don't know how many miles they need to create, so...
When?
Uh, July, August.
July, August.
Great. With dates to be determined. But Speedy Reedy is very pleased to go in with us and help, so...